Board, I know we've got a couple of members that's on the way up, but for the sake of being timely, we're going to get started. I know it's not on the agenda, but I'd like to ask Alderman Royal if she would start us off in a prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Today, our heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity together to conduct city business. We pray that our decisions and our deliberations will be inclusive. We pray that we will make decisions and policies according to what is the good of the entire citizens of our city. We ask for your leadership along with your guidance. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, board. So today is November the 3rd, 2022. This is our special meeting. We're calling it a retreat. It'll probably be a half a day retreat. So we will do a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Alderman Prill?
Here.
Alderman Royal?
Here.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Odom?
Here.
Alderman Kinsey?
Here.
Alderman Best? Alderman Brinson?
Here.
All right. So it looks like our first topic is going to be a general discussion and overview of retreat. So Mr. Hughes.
Good afternoon, Mayor Alderman. So I'm glad we're all able to join together at this retreat to talk about a variety of topics. We've got several items on the agenda. We chose the most timely. We've got some other items that some of the Alderman would like to see. And so based on time constraints that we're thinking for some of those items, such as a strategic plan, we're going to opt to have that at another meeting. But under the general discussion, we do have a few other things that I want to talk about. So we are, we do have a pretty good schedule on this. The goal is to get out before five. If it goes long, then it will go longer. But there are several things we'd like to discuss with you. And so during this meeting, staff is going to be looking for direction on a variety of these things. You're not going to be taking action, but you'll be giving direction to the manager on these. The first item that I'd like to talk about and just get your thoughts and comments are on the weekly and monthly reports that you all receive. I've got reports that some of the information is too much information, some may be too little of the information. So I'd like to know from you what you think about those reports. Are they meaningful? Is there a benefit for you to get those? And just hear how you'd like for that to evolve.
Board?
As far as I am concerned, I think that is very meaningful. Being new to the Board of Alderman, it gives me opportunity to get a better scope as to what is going on within the city. So definitely, I appreciate receiving those reports.
I'd like to see it shortened a little bit, other things that you normally do. I don't think we have to share that part because that's what you do. But pertaining to the city business itself, I like to see more other things that involve the city itself.
Key topics is what you're looking for.
Key topics, correctly.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I would kind of reiterate that a little bit also is I get to see what all the departments are doing, and that is great and that's, you know, helpful. But I think by a topic, you know, some of our hot topics, you know, like Stanley White, some of our CADA, FEMA, you know, a little more targeted, I guess, than some areas that we typically get questions about.
Okay.
So that's, so I guess that's more of an addition. I'm just going to make it shorter, but you know, just keeping us up to date on that. And I think it's, right now, you're giving us by exception. And I think on those special topics, if you just keep a running line. Hey, here's where we are, kind of thing, then I think that'd be beneficial.
Okay.
I think it can be condensed down quite a bit. It's mighty, it's mighty long, and it takes up a lot of time to write such a report up. I think it just bullet, send. I don't need to know, maybe some of us do, but I don't really need to know how many permits were issued, you know, and that kind of stuff. Just, you know, like I said, hot topics.
Yeah. I mean, no offense to Kim, you know, but it doesn't mean much to me how many entries were keyed, you know. I mean, it's, okay, that doesn't give me, there's no context, you know, so it doesn't mean much. And I don't know about you guys too, you know, getting the monthly report the month after, you know, it's like, well, you know, I'd rather look at the weekly reports than, you know, just for example, we just got September's report. So, okay, I kind of thought I'd be getting October's report, you know what I mean? So I'm not sure how much the monthly report is very timely or useful.
And I feel the same way about street leaks. I mean, at one time, we were having a whole lot of problem with leaks, and the Board requested that. But as far as I'm concerned, you can go away with sending me a memo with three street leaks on it.
I agree with that one.
Unless you have...
I agree.
Yeah.
And that's what we want to hear. We want to give you something that's going to be meaningful, and no, we don't want to take an additional step.
If you have a major, I mean, you're good at that anyway. If you have a major, like what happened on Simmons Street, and it's going to cause a big road closure or something like that, shoot me, shoot me an email or something. But just that you had a meter leak at such, such an address, it's just not meaningful to me. It's just not anymore. It used to be because we had so much of it.
Got you.
Alderman Best, we're, just so you know, we're talking about the weekly and monthly reports. If you have any feedback for staff on anything you'd like to see changed or continue with those.
Oh, I would like to have the weekly and monthly report to continue. But I agree with y'all on that leak report, citywide leak report, unless it is a major issue in particularly in my ward or something. And Foster, again, as Alderman Odom stated, you're really good about giving us out, you know, information and stuff. So, yeah.
One suggestion that I would make, I think I was actually the one that recommended this weekly report, might have been actually two boards ago now, was to help improve communication. Because oftentimes, we would get asked when we're out in the public about a particular topic, and we would not know. And the concept was to have each department head put their highlights of the week to send it to the manager. So the manager was also in the loop with those items, and then sort of pull the most important things from each department, and then send us what you felt as a manager would be important for us to know. I don't know that you're getting down to the granular level of wanting to know how long we expect a report to be, but in my mind, I think you could have a one-page report with each department listed with the top one or two bullet points for the week for each one of those departments. I think that would be appropriate from my perspective.
I'm in agreement with that.
I agree.
Okay. Any other comments?
I like to have as much detail as possible, especially if it's something pertaining to my ward. But it's, that's just my preference.
Okay.
But that hasn't stopped me from asking for more detail. And we're always happy to provide any, and a lot of you do reach out once we send something out and ask for additional detail. And that's when some other meetings, especially with citizens, evolve. And so always happy to share anything you'd like to know.
Maybe the monthly report could be the robust one with more detail in it. And to Alderman Brinson's point, is there a closing of books or something that causes that report to be on the timeline that it is?
I think that's kind of evolved. Yes, there are some things that staff waits on, and that's why, that's why it takes that time. Normally, they're given till the 10th of the following month to provide all that information, just the total. And some things are in the weekly reports, some things are not that are compiled in that monthly report. And then just the time it takes to compile all those. That's normally why it's a month later. I hear you.
Okay. Any other comments on that? All right. Next item is, the topic has come up about monthly work sessions for the Board to discuss topics as they come up. And most likely to vet some things out before it actually comes to a board meeting to discuss. So I wanted to get your thoughts and comments on that, and any direction you wanted to provide. Alderman Prill, I think that was one of you brought up.
Well, it is. I'm fully supportive, and I appreciate the fact that some board members might not want to be looking at adding another meeting per month. However, I think to have a monthly work session meeting gives us the ability as a group to talk about issues that are anticipated that they will be coming before us for some decision to be made. At the present time, we don't have that opportunity other than at our official meetings. And it's difficult to have a back-and-forth conversation when we have an audience and everybody's kind of waiting for a final decision to be made. I think there's a lot of information that could be shared amongst the Board at a work session meeting. No decision being made. It's just a give and take to better understand where each of us are at with regards to any particular issue. I just think that that's a valuable tool that is not being utilized by the Board right now and could be very valuable moving forward.
Board?
Well, with me, and before I make my statement, I'll say this. I know we have three new Alderman, and I know that they want to get updated on special projects and what's really going on. So I understand that. Because, but with me, I know what's going on within my ward. If I have questions or whatever, I reach out to Foster or I reach out to the department head, the department heads to find out, to get more detailed information, and get updates or whatever. And I know Foster is very good about actually contacting you and letting you know about certain projects and give you information. So I, me personally, I do not prefer an additional meeting per month.
I don't think ward issues is what we're talking about.
I know you're talking...
We're talking about cross-city issues.
Exactly.
That affect multiple wards.
Okay.
So, you know, I know that some of the Alderman working initiatives, you know, just like I am. And so I'd kind of like to know, you know, what's going on. And the Tuesday night meetings is not really the meeting to have those discussions or to, it doesn't really facilitate itself for a level of discussion like we do here, so.
Well, from one point, from one meeting to the next, you have a two-week period. This is just my, this is just my preference, okay? You have a two-week period there. And if there's anything that you have read or come across or emailed or projects going on, I just feel like you should, that's adequate time for me, speaking for me, to get with the city, with the mayor or another Alderman or the city manager.
I just, Alderman Prill brought up a point that a regular board meeting is not really conducive to a back-and-forth type general conversation. It's more formal, I think, is what you were saying. Just keep in mind that if we have a third meeting and it's the full Board, it's going to be a regular board meeting. I mean, the public's going to be, it's going to be an open meeting. The public's invited to come. Whether or not they do or not, that'll be up to them.
Be televised.
If we don't televise, we're not required to televise it.
Yeah, but if we don't, you know what we'll hear.
Then we're going to hear that we're, you know, operating with a lack of transparency. And I think what you're trying to do is actually improve the transparency. So it's just something we want to keep in mind. Personally, I stated during the campaign that I wouldn't be opposed to having a third meeting of the month if we rotated it throughout the city, and that's when we had our petition of citizens. Because I think oftentimes, I heard two things during the campaign. People come here for the notoriety and their four minutes of fame, even though they can say anything they want to say, whether or not it's truthful or factual or not. It's televised, and people hear things. And the next thing you know, that's what's spreading throughout the community. And we typically don't have a back-and-forth discussion during petition of citizens. The other thing I heard is a lot of people would like to come talk to the Board about issues and concerns, but they don't want to come here and get in front of everybody in front of a camera. So by rotating it through the community, it would be more amenable to them to approach the Board. So I guess my question for staff or Alderman Brinson or Prill, what would a, just maybe share with us a couple of examples of a topic that you would envision would be on one of these work sessions that we would be talking about?
Before they respond, let me add to that also. Again, being new on the Board, sometimes I get the feeling that we should know certain things that we don't know. And being presumptuous to think that we're coming in, we need an opportunity outside of the opportunity to discuss, again, city issues and business. I would welcome the opportunity for us to have some type of setting wherein we can be brought up to speed. I am a person that do my due diligence. I research. I like details. I do all of the above, but yet, at the same token, in the meeting setting, again, as it was expressed, there are not opportunities that are good opportunities where we can really engage. So at some point, being new to the Board, we do need space and time. It doesn't have to be continuous for the whole year. It could be quarterly. It could be something, again, that just allows us to discuss projects, plans, city business and what have you, that would bring all of us together. One thing we have to make note of, the decisions that we're making, no matter what the ward is, it impacts the entire city. And whatever decisions we make should have that overall view in mind. That is not just Ward Two that I'm advocating for, but whatever I vote towards impacts us all. So I want to be informed, and I want to be able to make an informed decision. And sometimes, the spur of the moment, we cannot do that. I don't have access to the information you have access to. I'm not privy to perhaps some meeting that it was discussed in. I wasn't on the Board at the time it was discussed. So there's so many varying issues that interplay here. But again, I welcome the opportunity. Again, if not monthly, then quarterly or bimonthly or however we can make the arrangement. And I feel that it would give us opportunity to get a better insight into being able to govern the city and make appropriate decisions.
Yeah, Barbara.
I'll do respect to you, Alderman Royal. I don't want you to misunderstood, misunderstand the statement I just made when I use preference to my ward. And I mean just specifically my ward, but I was speaking, when I was speaking, I'm speaking of my ward. But again, I represent the entire city, so.
I guess more of what I'm thinking is, you know, not necessarily that we need another board meeting. If we can make new business a little more robust, it's kind of where I'm coming from. But, you know, when you are, when the meeting is, by the time you get to new business, it's 8:30, 9:00, 9:30. You know, the incentive is to say nothing. But what I'm trying to say is, I think we can take that. And then if the decision is not to have another meeting, we take the opportunity during new business to say, hey, here's the meetings I've had in the last two weeks. Here's the initiatives I'm working on in the last two weeks. And that kind of starts the discussion. But like I said, when you start having those types of discussions at 8:30, 9:00, 9:30, not just, you know, the folks that are watching, but you know, how many of us are ready to have those conversations at that time of night after a long meeting? That's kind of where I'm coming from.
Well, that's the reason why new business was actually added to the agenda, so we could have, you know, bring out that and discuss these things that we all have going on in our ward or, you know, whatever. So, yeah, I'm in favor. If you've got, if you've got something that you want to discuss, or if you have questions, new business is the time to do it, however long it takes. I mean, if you have a meeting, it's going to, you know, it's the same timeframe as if you were doing it while we're sitting here, so.
I just, you know, having sat through these from the outside and now from here for the last two and a half, three years, that's not have been the practice.
I agree with that.
Miss City Clerk, can you remind us, we used to have work sessions built into our calendar, and the previous Board did away with that and decided we would call them when we needed them? Do you remember how often we would have those?
Every other month.
Okay. I personally, it sounds like there's a little bit of dissension here. If we feel like we want to have more, I think bimonthly would be more appropriate than monthly. I think what we're going to do is we're going to struggle to find topics to discuss on a monthly basis. And the other suggestion I would make is kind of going along with what Alderman Best said was three board members at any point in time can have a meeting with the staff. So if the three new board members, because I remember when I got on the Board, I was part of three new board members. We had a lot of one-off meetings with staff to discuss things, get up to speed. And then we did have work sessions when they were appropriate. So what I would suggest doing is everybody kind of think about this conversation. And then when we come to our meeting Tuesday night under new business, somebody can make a decision on how you want to move forward. Is that good?
It's good. And I also just want to add this. It's like, you know, our city employees work hard. They have a heavy workload, a lot of departments, and it's just like putting them through another meeting per month or biweekly or however, quarterly. I just think that's just added, added to their workload. And I just, I don't like that. I think they have enough, they don't have enough time during the course of the day to really handle a lot of the problems and issues and concerns that they have. So, do y'all agree with me? Put you on the spot.
And we all know when they're going to say that. Okay, Mr. Managers, 12:53. So what's next?
Okay, I've got a few other things. Just to remind you, I'm happy to meet with you one-on-one at any time you'd like to. If the methods of communication that I've been having with some of the existing board members is fine, just let me know. Because happy to meet with you here at the City Hall or on your site to discuss any topics that may come up. And I've met with several of you and citizens the last few months as well to discuss issues, so just want to let you know that. General update on the Talbot Lot. That for sale sign goes up tomorrow. We do not get direction on a minimum price, so unless the Board tells me otherwise, it's whatever offer anyone wants to make, the clerk will collect that and will report it to the Board as we get that.
Does the Board want to set a minimum price for the Talbot Lot? If not, you're going to get some for some ridiculous amount.
Well, I think the minimum should be the appraised value, right?
I thought that was my understanding too.
I'd recommend that you set the minimum price at $750,000.
What is the appraised value?
It's approximately 500, off the top of my head, $560,000 or $580,000. The problem with the appraised value is that was one appraiser's thought when he did that appraisal. We could go get another appraisal done by a different appraiser now, and it could be a million dollars. So that's the reason that I don't put as much faith in that particular appraisal. That's just my personal opinion. I would not sell that lot for the appraised value. It's going to take more than that, so.
I would, then I would like to suggest that we give the city manager direction as a $750,000 minimum price.
Excuse me. How old is that appraisal?
Recent. We just recently.
Okay.
The lot was under contract many years ago for, I think, a million and $50,000 when it became the Talbot Lot at the time, so. Does anybody have an issue with 750? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm still opposed to the concept of selling it, but so I will participate in this discussion.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Good?
And you said that's minimum.
And that doesn't mean that we have to sell it. So if we get an offer for 750, and we feel like there's a lot of traction and there could be some better offers, then we don't have to accept that. And I believe if we did decide to accept a minimal offer of 750, that triggers the upset bid process, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So it's a long process before we would actually make that decision to sell it.
Okay, one more update for you. The Tisdale House, as you know, we've been working with Preservation Foundation. They received approximately eight to 10 applications for the house. Now, we had the house advertised over a period of a month, and we had an open house each week. We probably had 75 or 80 folks that came through the house to look at it. They have two serious applicants that they're looking at. This Board did give direction, sorry, the previous Board did give direction to get an appraisal on the Rim Avenue property. The city owns that property appraised at $45,000 to sell to the Preservation Foundation. As a part of that process, we had to get a recombination plat on that, and there was a cost associated with that. Our goal was to have gotten that on the agenda for November 8th. Our attorney was on vacation last week, so he was not able to get anything done with that. So our new goal is to have this before the Board on November 22nd. So just to let you know where things stand on that. And now I think it is time for our update on our city projects. Citywide projects. Colleen, if you would come out? So staff has been working on a project dashboard for the last month or so. Alice, our GIS manager, has done a great job of putting this together. So we're going to kind of walk you through this. It's not ready to go live, but it will be on the city's website within the next few weeks once we have all of the projects in place. And this is just going to give you a good idea of how many projects are actually going on within the city. So at the top left, you'll see percentage of projects by department. Now, this is not up to date because I don't think we've included in the full electric utility yet. The water resources, big projects were recently added. But it gives you a percentage breakdown of projects that the city is doing. And a lot of these, some of these projects may be $10,000 or $15,000 items. The majority of them are larger, $100,000 or more. Colleen, if you'll go the next. So below, you'll see as of right now, that estimated cost of city projects is approximately $35 million in projects. Now, that also includes funding from grants, ARPA funds, and a variety of sources. Let's see here. Pull back out of that, Colleen.
Can we get that to show the actual million and not in?
Yeah, it should be. Pull that again, Colleen.
I think you have one project selected.
Yeah, I think you're on one project.
Oh, yes, you know.
So. All right. Approximately $30 million in projects, and that's a total of 58 projects overall that each department is working on. On the far right, you will see the project listing, the department that is coordinating those projects, the funding mechanism that's in place for that, and the stats, whether they're in the planning phase, it's under review or it's under construction. And so this will be a good idea for citizens to see exactly what's going on. And we do have quite a lot of projects. Then you'll see the map in the center. And Colleen, click on one of the items. So if you click on a certain item, here's an example of a water sewer rehab project that Water Resources is doing. It has some general information, a brief description of what the project is while we're doing it, estimated cost of the project, how it's being funded. They're currently in the planning stages. Jordan Hughes is in contact for that information. And then it talks about the wards that are affected by it. So I think it's a nice transparent way to let folks know, hey, yeah, this is what we're doing. doing. We're also working to compile a list of, of, um, stormwater projects that have occurred throughout the city, uh, to let you know by ward where we stand, how much money we spend in each ward, to give you an idea on that as well. So, Public Works is working on that now. Uh, any, any questions or comments on, on the dashboard?
Where is this, um?
It, it will, it will be posted on the city's website most likely by the end of next week. We're still wanting to update some things, but we'll send something out. The board members will also, uh, let the public know about it as well.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, with that being said, we're gonna segue into public utilities. At this time, I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Richard to come up and make his presentation on the electric utility.
Thanks. Good afternoon. Just a quick review of the electric department. I think Mr. Hughes has something planned on water and wastewater after it finishes up. About fifty-five million dollar budget, six divisions, staff of eighty-eight personnel. We were, we organized over the last two years, merging metering, billing, customer service, and payments from the finance department to the utilities department. I would say that I'm very pleased with those results. Coordination, uh, between those groups is, is working a lot better. Quality control and efficiencies amongst our operations. So, um, appreciate the support on, on that reorganization because I think it is benefiting the utility as well as all of our customers. Uh, the electric department's, uh, has been supporting our fiber, the city's fiber system since its infancy. And I've been discussing with the finance director how we can share these costs with the city going forward. Um, it is aging and we do invest quite a bit into our fiber system. Otherwise, we purchase, we deliver power, we meter and bill sales for all of our enterprise service funds, collect revenues for all of our enterprise service funds, provide customer support and service for all our enterprise service funds, and then we operate and maintain and support our systems. Utility challenges, pressures that I'm feeling, pressures that the industry is feeling, pressures on this utility. Of course, we're anticipating rising power supply costs that always keeps me up at night. Um, in response, we need to optimize and leverage the cost avoidance components in our power supply contract. Um, I'm working very hard to leverage that. Um, there's always pressure on us to maintain competitive retail rates and to keep those rates as level as possible. So, there's a lot going on behind the scenes on, on minimizing the impact on our rates. Continue, we must continue to invest in system improvements and build a resilient and reliable system for our customers. Um, we need to ensure that we have capacity for our current customers as well as, um, the growth that we're seeing. Our supply chains, um, they're showing signs of rapid inflation, uh, for the cost of all goods and all services. There's also uncertainty with availability and delivery of many, uh, goods and services. It's putting a lot of pressure on us, um, how we operate. The density, uh, of our customers is starting to fill in within our territorial limits, as well as our territorial boundaries have grown over the, the last few years. And the amount of supporting resources and skills have changed over that, that period of time. And that's, that puts pressure on us to, to maintain a larger system with the same amount of staff, with the same type of budget. Um, so, so it is pressuring us. The labor market is still very, very competitive. Um, we're always, first, we always try to develop from within and build that talent from within our organization. But there is a growing need for more advanced skill sets and more experience within the utility. Efforts that I think are emerging that I may be back in front of you talking about, asking for, um, your support on, um, things that you might need to be aware of. National, on a national basis, there's a shortage of transformers. It's very real. Um, we've seen typical delivery times on transformers were about eight weeks. That's now gone up to two years. I received a quote the other day for four years. Didn't buy anything off of it, but I was quoted four years. Um, if you can get a quote from a, a service per, or a vendor, um, our costs on some of this equipment, transformers has escalated nine hundred percent. Um, so it's very unprecedented, and we need to balance our, our new growth and the amount of inventory that we have, what we're buying, the lead times on those, with, with the growth, with requests from new customers, as well ensure that we can provide service for our existing customers. So, that's, that's a real issue that I'm trying to manage. And you may hear more about that in the news and the media about that transformer shortage is real. Uh, Department of Energy is putting some pressure, um, to, on the supply chain to, to help that along. They've been talking about putting ARPA money into that. Um, so, it's, uh, it's, it's real and it's, it's, I'm being redundant, but, uh, it's a very real concern.
Charlie, may I interject?
Pardon?
May I interject?
Yes.
Um, can you give me, what was the price of a transformer before and now? I think you told us before it was nine thousand dollars?
I'll use a, a fifty KVA transformer. It serves typically on a routine basis, maybe six houses, six customers. Um, that was about a eight to twelve lead, lead time at about a thousand dollars. And now it's a two-year lead time and about nine thousand dollars, if you can get a quote. And those are promised dates. I still haven't seen them. I've got a bunch on order, haven't seen them go. And then when, when they get here, I gotta get them off the truck and see if they work. So, it's something that keeps me up at night. The southeast substation I've been talking about for quite a long time, I apologize, it's moving slowly. I've been giving up on it. Um, most recently, our cost estimates have doubled. I've said in the past, it's about a ten million dollar project. I'm estimating about twenty million dollars. So, I'm going back into that scope of work and I'm trimming it down. I'm trying to really tighten that up as much as possible. Concurrently with that, we're finalizing, um, our land procurement contracts that would both be for the sale of real property as well as easements that we need to, to, uh, build power lines that come out of that substation. And I'll be bringing those contracts to you as soon as possible.
And where is the southeast substation? Where is it located?
On County Line Road.
Okay.
Near the intersection of Old Airport Road.
Okay.
Charlie, why don't you talk about the purpose of the substation?
Uh, capacity. And we, we need capacity right now, um, to add to, um, reliability and resiliency and as well as future growth. This location is strategic and point of delivery from where I can receive power from the bulk electric system. You can't just pick it out of the air anywhere. Um, so it's very strategic with respect to where Duke can deliver it to us. Um, but also, if we cite it in that location, we can move a lot of load off of our other two substations in town, the Trent Road Substation and the Glenn Burney Substation. That'll shift some capacity over to that new substation and giving you more capacity in those substations to serve going west. So, we're kind of counting two birds with one stone there. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Um, generation, generation provides us a, a real cost avoidance opportunity in our power, power supply. Um, our fleet is nearing end of life. Um, I would probably average it at over twenty years, twenty, twenty-five years. And that fleet is scattered around at least thirty locations. Some of it's customer-owned, some of it we own. Very, very hard to maintain that many units, dispatch them. Um, so I'm working on a plan, uh, to, to migrate all of our generation capacity into a single location and a single point of dispatch. Gotta line that up with our power supply agreement. So, there's a lot of front-end, um, administrative work that, that I'm working through before I can bring anything before you. But that's, it's a real opportunity and, and, uh, I hope to be back with you, wanting to cite some generation in the near future.
Charlie, you're talking generation, you're talking about the generators that we have at the larger businesses throughout town?
Yes, sir.
You might, just for the benefit of some of the new members, explain the reason why we have generators out there.
The, the, the generators are dispatched in attempt to lower our peak demand. We get billed on our peak demand. If we can, if we can lower our peak demand, which occurs one hour a month, and we never know when that one hour a month is gonna be until the month has passed. So, we're chasing this peak every day of the week, and it's all based on weather. If we can shave that peak, we reduce our power supply costs. So, the game is the cost of generation versus the cost of that peak, is there cost avoidance there? And there is real cost avoidance there. Um, and we, we, I'm probably three to four hundred thousand dollars a month I shave off our power supply bill every month. And I'm not, we're not maximizing it right now because we don't have enough generation.
Is this an issue that's common to most municipalities?
It's common to municipalities in eastern North Carolina that are part of our, our power supply agreement. So, it's very common in this region. If you go to our neighboring communities that have public power, um, they're under the same power supply agreement. Some of them are shaving the peak. Some of them have said, it's not worth the cost, we're too small, we're not gonna make that investment, and they just let it ride. Um, but it's real money. It, it's, it's worth going after. And, and we do that in other ways too. We also, we have load management switches. You'll hear us talk about. They go, they affect the customer. They go on air conditioning, they go on hot water tanks, they go on heat strips, and we can operate them remotely. And when we get into those peak times, we shut them off. We incentivize our customers with a, with a little bit of a rebate on their monthly bill. And it, adding all that up lowers the peak. So, we're trying every, every way possible to lower our peak. Generation, um, is the best way to do it, the most efficient way to do it without bothering our customers.
Thank you.
And is this dovetail or in conjunction with your battery initiative or, or not?
Yes. Um, the contract, we're writing the contract right now. I might get, um, we might receive the contractual authority to choose either generation or batteries. Um, I would write them in generation over batteries any day of the week for this application. When, when batteries first emerged, it was, at that time, it was in addition to generation. Um, now I think we're at the contract negotiations, it's either or.
Charlie, just a quick question. I don't think I've ever asked this before, but do you have some data that shows at the end of the month whether or not our efforts with load management matched up with the peak for that particular month?
Yes, absolutely. I'm a month behind because I don't, I don't true up my costs until the last hour of the last day of the month. So, your point about seeing some of these reports come a month later is because I'm in. Um, I don't, I can't finalize my power supply information until typically the fifteenth of the following month. But yes, I, I do have that. I can share, I can send out last year's history. We look at it every single month. Customer service and payments, um, as you know, they were recent, were recently robbed. Um, since we're reorganized, reorganizing that I mentioned, we've added video monitoring system to the, um, to the facility. That was key in, in recovering on all of our losses. We also added a safe point handling cash system and armored cash pickup there. That was added probably last fall or, or last spring. And we're having cash pickups three times a week. So, a lot of improvements there safety-wise. Something that we probably should consider, and it's a very brave conversation to have, um, it impacts our brand, is should we consider closing that operation to walk-in payments? I, I know I can probably very easily expand the drive-through and add more lanes there. I can add a few more drop boxes, force customers to pay other ways than by walking in, through the drive-through, through electronic, through drop boxes, all the methods that we have. Leave the customer service, leave the building open for customer service work on an appointment only basis and not receive cash as a walking. Tough conversation to have, but.
How many people are using it now to walk in and pay their bills?
A lot.
A lot?
Charlie, how was it during COVID? The building was closed, correct?
Um, operationally, we thought it, it was a lot more efficient. We, there were some complaints about stacking of cars, um, in the parking lot, um, because the building was closed. I, I would think that adding more lanes to the, to the drive-through would ease that. Um, but that, that was the biggest, for us, it worked really well during COVID. We didn't have any problems with it. There was people in the community that complained because of the parking harness fall.
Charlie, outside of going in and making a payment or going through the drive-through, the online payment system or the drop box at, at the CAPS building, are there any other options for customers to make their payment?
There's, there's a, I can't quote them off the top of my head, but they can go to, um, I think Walmart, um, Fruitline. There's places around town.
Pigly Wibley as well.
Might be Pigly. Don't hold me to that. I'll have a list in front of me and I'll have it memorized. But we have a number of resources, locations, partners in town that they can drop it off with.
Is there a convenience fee when people pay outside of CAPS Center? I know there is online for credit card payment.
We're absorbing, depending on how you pay, we're absorbing some of those costs.
I have to get back with you to verify. I think there is an extra fee if you drop it off at, at Walmart. But let me, I need to double check.
I think it'll be beneficial for us to know because we've had this discussion for several years about, um, do we have a kiosk inside the CAPS Center if somebody wanted to pay with a credit card? We don't have that yet, do we?
No, but you can pay with a credit card inside there.
But, but you have to have someone help you do that.
Correct.
So, my argument has always been, we keep talking about who's gonna pay for this convenience fee, but the convenience fee, it, that payment aspect is the least labor-intensive for the city. But we're talking about putting that burdened fee on the payer. The people that should be paying the fee are the ones that are walking in and paying with cash that has, you know, we have to have the building open for them, we have to have a cash pickup. Those are where the fee should come in. And so, it's a, it's a much bigger conversation. Obviously, we're not gonna have to date.
Yes.
Getting that information, because Alderman Prill and I had a brief conversation about it last week as well.
But, but even, even taking payments cashierian electronically, there's still a lot of labor involved with reconciling that and, um, with our, with our collection system as well as its finance. So, it, it's labor, cashiering is labor-intensive no matter how you do it. There's a cost.
So, if you stop, if you stop walk-ins, would you reduce staff?
No, sir. I have no plan.
So, what's the benefit of stopping walk-ins? I'm, I'm, did I miss something?
That, that there's nobody walking in with cash. Cash is not being handled across the counter.
And?
The building would be, my, I would suggest the building is open for appointments for customer service work. So, if you can't do your paper, paperwork electronically, you can sign an appointment with us, come in, we'll get you, your application squared away. But I'm proposing we consider, if you don't walk in to pay your bill with cash, we take the cash, put it in the drawer, and send it to the bank.
Well, Charlie, and this, I might be in left field, but, you know, I'm gonna grab it anyway. What about if you have a window set up for cash payments? So, a person, the building is locked, but they have that window there. And if you, you don't go through the drive-in because you don't have a car or whatever, you can walk up to that window and make a payment with cash.
We have that now.
Oh, you do have that?
That's where we were.
They can walk up to a window there and pay with cash?
Yes.
Is that in the drive-through window?
No, that's inside.
It's inside though?
Yes.
But I'm saying like make it to where, how you got the drive-through window?
Well, you can walk up to the drive-through. We're not gonna turn you down because you're not in a car. You can walk.
What about an outside drop box?
We do have an outside drop box. We can, we can improve those, add to our outside drop points. Um, so, my point is, is it, it's, safety's first, safety's always.
Right, right.
And it, this is very recent, very new. It's something that we should probably be considering. Again, it's, it, it's a brave conversation to have. It's, it impacts our brand, hometown service, not a one-eight-hundred number. Pick up the phone, you can get us.
I, I'm a little.
The only difference would be that, don't come in and make a cash payment.
I'm, I'm opposable here now. Where is this window at, um, located on the UBO office? That you can come walk up to and make a cash, not the drive-through, but the?
Just at the drive-through.
Okay.
Just.
Well, that's what I was, maybe I didn't.
I missed, maybe I misunderstood.
Yeah, maybe I didn't express myself clearly enough. But that's what I was saying is like if you put, just like you have a window there for the drive-through, okay, you have an, an, a window set up where. You have a, a window set up where people can walk up to and make their cash payments and they can't come into the building.
We'd have to modify, we could consider it. We'd have to modify the building somehow to do that. But right now, they could walk up to the drive-through and we would process their transaction.
Well, see, I'm looking at it from a perspective of elderly citizens. I know they want to get out, you know, walk up to that drive-through window with cars coming, you know?
Understood. There's, there's a drop box.
I know, but a lot of elderly like the cash.
I know, it's a big.
Like to make their payments with cash and so.
Charlie, when you come back with some of that additional information, I think it would be beneficial if, if you don't spend a great deal of time on it, but maybe provide the board with what other utility providers in the city of New Bern take payments the way we do.
Yes, sir.
Because I don't know of any.
Oh, and not, not, there's nobody you can, only in the municipal world.
I mean, there's payments being taken at Peak Wiggly.
Right.
Customers' cash payments, you know?
Sure. That's kind of my point is there's a lot of other opportunities that we haven't done a good job at exploring in the past.
We market them. It just, that option continues to exist for, for some folks to walk in and make a payment. And there's some risk in that and, and there's a safety factor in that.
Was the money recovered?
Yes, ma'am. NCDOT, they continue to put pressure on us. Both the entire utility, electric, water, wastewater, and fiber. The next phase will be emerging probably first or second quarter of next year. And that would be from James City to Havlock, from Thurman Road to Havlock. And NCDOT will be asking for all our utilities to be relocated. When those designs come out, we will have an idea of where we need to relocate them to. So we don't, at this point in time, we don't know. We don't have enough information. But I'm guessing at some point in time, I'll be coming back to you with a utility relocation agreement with NCDOT, just like we did on the first phase. And we'll probably be coming back at some point in time with an agreement with the county to move the shared fiber. So that, that's, that project's long from being over and there'd probably be more work within with the 43 connector. That's starting to pick up a little bit. So they put a lot of pressure on us. EV charging, we put in for another DEQ grant down in Havlock. We had a location site at rumor mill. As of this week is that grant is going to be awarded to Circle K as the owner. I have not received an official word from DEQ yet. Be interesting to see if Circle K actually gets it and what the price point is. So either way, we'll be watching it. Just a little update there. Advanced rate structures, you might hear we talk about that in the future. Again, there's a time of use component to our power supply costs. And going forward, we'll need to start offering time of use rates to our retail customers. We'll give them more choice, more opportunity on, on how to consume their, their power and how they, how much they want to pay for it. So there's some backend office things that I need to do before we're ready to offer those advanced rates. But it, it's emerging and the rest of the industry is headed in that direction as well. Street lighting, it's very difficult to administer. Over the last few years, I've been trying to clean up. We do better housekeeping on our street lighting records and make some improvements each year. So I'm planning on possibly coming back around budget time with, with some more improvements to our electric streetlights, trying to get it in better position to easily administer better and make sure all the rates are in line with the type of lamps that we're offering. That's all I have planned. Can I answer any questions?
Charlie, the number of transformers that we currently have in inventory versus the subdivisions that are in the planning stage, are, are we going to be in any trouble there?
I gotta keep an eye on it. It keeps me up at night. Not all transformers are equal. And I'll size the same. Some are overhead, some are underground, some are big, some are small, some have different voltages. We had minimum stocking levels established based on what our supply chains were. And that changed overnight. Do we, did we ever stock 100% of our installed inventory? No. What is the right inventory level now to stock? We're working on it.
This has the potential of actually slowing down home buildings, right? I mean, and it.
Absolutely.
Well, if we can't get transformers, they certainly can't, we can't build houses.
Absolutely.
So there's houses.
Ah, I was there.
Yeah. And I, and I think our priorities to serve are just in customers. And if they have a failure on their, their transformer right now, that's 20 years old, that's been in service for that long and it fails, they expect me to have a replacement for them. And I expect to have a replacement for them.
Thank you, Charlie.
Were there any other questions?
No, just thank you so much for all that you do.
Our pleasure.
Please.
Thank you so much, Charlie. To you and your staff.
All right, if Mr. Hughes will come up and make his presentation on the water resource side.
Let me get a quick hand from Colleen. Thank you, ma'am. While Colleen's getting us up to date on the slide, I'll, I'll real quickly just echo some of the information that Charlie, Charlie already highlighted without going into a lot of detail. As far as the, the strain on resource, we're seeing the exact same thing with the water resource side of the house, whether it be materials, labor, contractors. Everything is becoming more difficult to get our hands on and have that resource we need to complete the work we're doing, whether that be day-to-day work or the capital projects. So like Charlie said, something we're keeping an eye on is challenges we're, we're continuing to work through. It seems like new challenges every week. We are noticing in the last few months, and I anticipate this to pick up pace in the months to come, has a lot of the state and federal ARP money is working its way down to recipients and getting into capital projects. You're, you're going to see more and more demand on those resources. So there's already a high level of demand on the contractors, on the material, on the equipment. And we really haven't seen very much of the ARP money hit the street yet. The projects that have been funded federally and through state ARP allocations really haven't even gone out for bids yet. So I anticipate the first and second quarter of '23 to start seeing some of the bids come out. And that's really going to really put a strain on that resource level. I think it's going to become much more difficult to get, especially the capital projects, much more difficult to get those competitively priced and get those implemented probably in the next 24, 36 months. So what we're trying to do is we have several projects that are, I think, ahead of the, the large rush on those resources. We're trying to get those out the door for bidding, trying to get contractors here, trying to get materials and equipment here. We're trying to get about 12 and a half million dollars worth of projects under construction by the end of this fiscal year. Some of those are already in construction. Some of those are in a bidding phase. We have a very large project with a few bids tomorrow. And others are wrapping up the permitting phase and hope, we hope to have out for bid in, in early '23. So we're trying to stay, get ahead of the rush and get contractors here, get materials here while we still can, get some of that work done with anticipation that some point in the next year and a half to two years, those projects are going to get very difficult to get. It's okay. What I, in the packet, there are six projects that I've highlighted that are water resource projects. This will give you a brief update. These are projects we have either gone out for bids and currently in construction or projects that you'll see come back before you will talk about either for contract procurement or for the bidding process in the months to come. The first one is NCDOT project in James City. That's where we're relocating a large amount of water and sewer infrastructure to accommodate the NCDOT Highway Improvement Project, that project. The work's about $10 million worth of New Bern's water and sewer infrastructure is getting relocated. Higher proportionate share of that work is $2.3 million. So we, we've already allocated that money out through fund. They're, they're actually in construction of that. At this point, got about 20% of the work complete. Running through some challenges with that. We've probably got another 18 months worth of churning through that relocation work. And as Charlie hinted to a few moments ago, this is actually the first phase of the James City or Highway 70 relocation work. As this is wrapping up, we will start getting, we'll start to get into the second phase, which is Thurman Road and Havlock. So we'll have, you know, in probably 24 months from now, anticipate, we'll have a, another round of utility agreements with NCDOT for water and wastewater infrastructure relocations and that portion of projects. So this is something, we worked with NCDOT on that stretch of Highway 70 with utility relocations for the next few years. The second one on the list is our Township 7 Sewer Improvements Project. This is one we've been working on for, for many years. This ultimately provides all the capacity we need to transmit all the sewer that's produced in the Township 7 area across the Trent River into Main New Bern and back to our main treatment plant. This includes pump station improvements, equalization based improvements, a lot of force made. It's a very large project, a very complex project. This is the one that the bids are actually opening for tomorrow at 11 o'clock. Fingers crossed we, we get a lot of participation. This is one we've actually had to rebid and, and re-advertise because we had, we did not have enough participation from bidders the first go-round. So we're already starting to see the lack of interest from contractors because they've all got so much work. It's kind of the story I got in talking to contractors in last month. They're already booked for the next six months, the next 12 months. They just don't have the capacity to take on any more work. So I, I think this will be a problem we'll continue to see. The next one on the list is our Northwest Interceptor Improvements Project. This is a lining of a very large sewer outfall line. This is phase two of a three-phase approach to rehabilitate, rehabilitate the entire outfall. The total anticipated cost for this one is about $615,000. And we do have a $230,000 grant from the Division of Water Infrastructure that helped fund a portion of that construction. The fourth one you'll see on your packet or list is basically the investment in rehabilitation of aged, aging infrastructure, water and wastewater that was installed, we'll say pre-1960. So geographically, this is basically anything from Simmons Street back east, back towards downtown, back towards Duffy Field and towards the rivers. Everything in, in those areas was basically installed prior to 1960. Over the last 20, 30 years, we have invested heavily in rehabilitating and replacing infrastructure in those areas. And we continue to invest about a million, a million and a half dollars a year. And we kind of do it on a block-by-block basis. And we work those projects in collaboration with the Public Works Department, make sure we're replacing infrastructure in places that they also have the need to do street rehabilitation. So the general idea is we can come to an area, fix the aging water, water and sewer lines, and then the Public Works Department can come right behind us with a paving program and resurface the street. It's, it's a kind of a one-two punch that works very well. The fifth one on the list is our West New Bern's Water System Improvements Project. This essentially is connecting two dead ends of our water system on the western side of town. Some improvements in pumping capacity, some improvements in storage capacity with an elevated storage tank. It ultimately meets the water needs for our growing West New Bern area. This is everything from Pleasant Hill Community back down to Highway 343 corridor and down the future Highway 43 corridor to the area of Highway 17 South, Trent Creek Road, as you work your way back down to Glendale. So from, you know, the Academy Shopping Center over to Branson School, back along what will be Highway 43 into Pleasant Hill, those are the areas that will get the improvements from this project. And last one on the list is our Southeast Water System Improvement Project. This is one that's actually in construction and about 60% complete. And this is a very similar project to the West New Bern Water System Improvements Project, where we're connecting two dead ends of the water system to improve fire flow and domestic capabilities in those areas. This is one that we went out for bids for a few months back, had a contracted year. It's about halfway done at this point. The estimated cost to complete that project is about $800,000. So this is just kind of scratching the surface on, you know, some of the bigger projects that either we have in construction now or we'll be coming back to talk to you about in the months to come. On top of that, we're continuing to kind of run at capacity with our day-to-day operations, just doing the stuff we, we do every day, working with the challenges we're having with resources, whether that be personnel, material, equipment. So it's, it's a very busy time for our water resource team. I, I think in the months ahead, as we close out calendar year '22 and we close out fiscal year '23, we, we will continue to face those challenges and work through them. So if you have to answer any questions anybody has on the, the capital projects we presented or just about the water resource operations as a whole.
Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan.
At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Charles to come up to give an update on Public Works Projects.
Board, while he's coming up, just to point out, we got through the first bullet point under this section and we're out of time. So just keep that in mind as the day progresses. In case you want to move anything around with my point was saying that.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Board. What I've got is just a general overview of what we currently have allocated for ARP funding from the Board's allocation. And then I'll follow up with a little bit on what we've got for our capital projects that are paving and sidewalk this fiscal year. As mentioned before by, by Charlie and George, all of our projects are seeing similar effects from supply issues, consultant staffing issues. And we are seeing some, some backend on contractor availability to, to get pricing. So I think we're going to, it's not, it's not isolated here. So it's going to be a cross-country issue, but it seems to be increasing slightly as the projects start to speed up with all the funding. So what I've done is broken down by Ward, how the, how your allocations have gone. I'll go over each one of them, just a brief overview of them. Ward one, we're still in the planning stage to address the failing Hancock Street culvert, which is a stormwater drain running beside railroad tracks. I will say that several of you have ordered or requested the electronic speed limit signs. We received the last one Monday. So they're all in, in-house and we will be working with each of you, depending on locations that you requested, and have those installed in the next two weeks, I hope. The Middle and Pollack Street traffic control signals, that would be for a signalized intersection and pedestrian control. We have contracted a consultant to begin that process of evaluation and design on that intersection. And as that progresses, I will update you with those, with that progression on, on the design work. Ward two, we have the Red Robin Trent Road intersection ditch. That it's been designed and bid, and we are hoping to have the contract documents done here shortly with a start date January of next year. The Trent Road Bank stabilization, which is close to Fly's Bike Shop where the, a large outfall goes through, that has been designed and we're anticipating going to advertisement. This month is when we're going to advertise for, for bids on that, that project. So we're, we're hoping to be able to award, award a bid from top of January and set a start date on that project.
George, just, um.
Yes.
Back to Ward one, Alderman Aster pointed out, that's supposed to be Middle and Brawl Street.
Yes, it is. I'm sorry.
I don't really think we're putting a stoplight up at Middle and Pollack.
Yeah, Middle and Brawl. Middle and Brawl. The, the sidewalks for Pembroke, we've had, I've had some initial conversations with Alderman Royal and we'll be following up to get, to get that set so we can get some design work done on those, those projects. Moving to Ward three, right now, we have, I have all of Alderman Aster's signs in. So if somebody hadn't already reached out to you, we'll set a timeline to work with those locations. Ward four, Race Track Road, which had been previously designed for improvements, was funded through the Ward four allocation. That will include widening of a section of Race Track Road from Elizabeth to the railroad tracks and then resurfacing from the railroad tracks to Moose Boulevard. That will also include an upgrade to the pipes crossing Race Track Road. It was identified, there was a 36-inch storm culvert identified in a prior drainage study, which was shown to be undersized. Included in this project will be upgrading that to a double 36. Ward five, the East Rose Culvert improvements. There's been some preliminary work done on this. And this is a, this whole area in the North Hills, East Rose area is a. the North Hills, East Rose area is a complex issue where many projects, many funding sources are tied together. We received the initial North Hills drainage study on thirty-first of October. We've gone through that, had some initial conversations, and as we work towards a final game plan on how we'll have that done and where the allocations will come from, right now we have the money for the culvert improvement. We have the additional allocation for that Ward for the North Hills stormwater-related projects. Then we also have the Golden Leaf Grant that we just received to lower the East Rose lift stations. So we have, we've got a lot of different projects that are all tied together that affect how this ultimate design works. So we're getting to the point now where we can start getting some real design ideas on cost of how we're going to, one, pay for it and the stages of the construction. Ward Six, set of electronic speed limit signs are in, and we'll have those installed. There's money allocated for Union Point Infrastructure improvements. That is for the pipe and storm drain box improvements in there. And that, we have a contract allocated, awarded for that, and we're planning to start after the first year once all of the festivals and holiday events end at Union Point. We have also gone through with Alderman Brinson and discussed the sidewalk gaps. We have retained a consultant with the design work for Morton to Glendale to accommodate some gap fill-ins in that area. The neighborhood sign replacement or improvement, public work staff has finished those that were requested in Ward, but they have decided to go ahead and keep working throughout the city on all the Ward signs that they see that are deficient and work on improving each one of them as time allows. So you'll see additional signs come out of additional Wards, get repainted and reset. So don't worry if your residents call in and say they're stolen. Our department usually took them, and we'll put them back in as soon as we get them fixed. The last bit of the Ward Six is the drainage improvement projects. We've had multiple meetings with consultants and Alderman Brinson about that, and we have narrowed it down to where we believe will be the most cost-effective and beneficial for that Ward. And once we have those set, we'll, Alderman Brinson will allocate the funds to those projects.
Yeah, I'll be coming to the Board, of course, for approval, but looking at improving the College Park drainage and the Piner's Drive pump station, which I'll recommend for funding.
Right, and then our capital projects for the year are usually our annual funding for resurfacing and sidewalks. Following up on what Mr. Hughes had mentioned, we are doing a follow-up project for infrastructure rehabilitation that he's doing in the Duffy Field area. So we'll be paving a portion of Washington, Riley, Myrtle, and Main Street to follow up behind his rehabilitation work on the utility services in that area. And then we have the second phase of our resurfacing will be Loos, Bosch Boulevard. We're going to try to do about fifteen hundred feet this year. We'll have to do it in phases. The road, the surface is degrading with the traffic in that area, so we're going to have to work on that stages. The sidewalk concrete improvements, our plan right now, we have hired a consultant for design work to tie in a portion of Loos Boulevard. So we're going to come out, we're planning to come out of the unimproved right-of-way of Madison, which is in the Southgate community, and then run towards the Garden Center Lane intersection so we can tie those areas and the newly constructed apartment complex across Loos Boulevard that utilizes that road for pedestrian access. We also have in our plans to do a portion of K Street from Main to Pavey in anticipation of the newly constructed Stanley White Rec Center. We're also looking at doing a portion of the north end of Henderson Park to tie in the Main Street for future plans as we look at for Sutton and Garden Street connections. If there are any questions or any general questions on the projects or status, right now we have an answer.
One question, George, the Race Track Road project, how soon will that project start?
We're hoping to have the bid documents available to bid out in January.
Okay, thank you. George, you have a lot of the ARPA money going towards stormwater and drainage projects. Looking at just the big picture of drainage issues for the city, what percent of that big picture is being addressed with this money? It's kind of an unfair question. I'm not looking for exact.
You know, and it varies depending on the project. We have the backside of College Park and Alderman Brinson's Ward that was a structural issue with how the grates were set on some of that drainage that we're going to address. We're trying to address known deficiencies that have already been identified. We're not trying to tackle historic drainage areas as large with those projects other than the work in Duffy Field. We've got other funding allocated to that area that'll allow us to do broader range projects. But in general, these have been, the Red Robin intersection bank with Trent Road has been historically degraded and sloughing off in the ditch. So, you know, those were easily identifiable. We can address them with this money. And that was where our aim was, to address a larger regional problem. We did not focus all that type of planning in with this funding. If that, I'm not sure that answered the question.
Well, I guess the point, the underlying point is that we're going to be seeing a lot of money going out in the future for drainage, stormwater projects. And realistically, there's probably not a light at the end of the tunnel that we're seeing at this point.
You know, for drainage in our area, and this is an eastern North Carolina problem, it's elevation. And that is nothing that we can fix with pipes. We just can't make upgrade in existing developed areas. So we have to deal with it in a different way, and that's what we're looking to do. So if you already have existing infrastructure, we're going to try to address it the best way we can. Will we prevent flooding in some areas? No. Will we be able to facilitate removing that water faster once whatever event is over? I believe so. That's what our aim would be.
Okay, thank you.
One question, Mr. Charles. The North Hills Drainage Study?
Yes, ma'am.
So there is, you have, what, two options? One option? Three options?
We have their recommendations that we need to have a full sit-down with them to get some kind of phasing, recognize that there may need to be additional funding sought for some of it, to address those issues of lifting water at lift stations. You're talking about increased cost, increased cost. So those are all conversations we need to have of how we're going to get to the light at the end of the tunnel for that area.
Okay.
Thank you, George. All right, I'd just kind of like to ask the Board to come forward and give an update on Parks and Recreation projects.
I'm going to give an overview of some of the major projects that are going on in Parks and Recreation. We have a number of projects going on, but I'm just going to review some of our major ones that we're currently working on. Okay, so the first one I have is Henderson Park. As you know, we're going to be redeveloping that park with the use of FEMA funds. We're going to be able to expand on the playground, install a new fitness course, add lights to the new basketball court that we recently installed, add some blacktop games such as hopscotch, four-square, et cetera, for some of the younger kids, install a thirty-by-sixty-five open shelter that can be used for reservations as well as a farmer's market, and the building of new restrooms that'll be located closer towards the front center area of the park versus where they have been previously in the back of the park. Next projects will be ones that are occurring at Lawson Creek Park. As most of you know, the F-11 jet restoration has been occurring, and I'm going to let Foster speak to that since he's been dealing primarily with that.
So as some of the new Board members may not be aware of this, but we contracted with New Bern Restoration back in the spring of this year. They came in, they painted the jet, and it was completed in late June, the first of July. We had two days of very bad rain. And as we're driving back and forth to work and looking at the jet, we think, is there pollen on the jet? What's going on with that? So Marvin and I went out there, and we got Public Works staff to take us up to see if what the deal was. And paint had basically come off with the rain, is basically what it was. And so after doing some research, we found that there was an issue with them putting too much primer on the jet, which resulted in the paint not adhering. So we spent a little bit of time working with the contractor. They actually came back on-site about two weeks ago to start prepping the jet again. They have got one full coat of paint on. I think they're finishing up their second coat this week, and they may have another day or two left of that, but I think they've resolved the issues. We're excited about that.
Okay, additional projects at Lawson Creek Park. We have the extension of the marsh walk. Last year, we completed rebuilding the marsh walk that was out at Lawson Creek Park that went to Jack's Island. And the beginning or the end of last year, we applied for a CAMM grant to help us extend that marsh walk three hundred feet around Jack's Island, give more opportunities for fishing off that end of the island and the water area over there. So we're going to be working on adding that three hundred-foot addition to the marsh walk. Total cost about seven hundred forty-seven thousand, and most of that is covered by the CAMM grant. One of our next projects, which is being funded thanks to ARPA funds, is a new shelter out at New Bern Memorial Cemetery. It's going to be about a seventy-five thousand dollar project where we will replace the shelter that's currently out there to be able, to be used for on-site services when needed in that cemetery. All right, next one, and one of my favorites is the Pleasant Hill Park Community Center. Staff have been working on it diligently. They have completed about fifty, sixty percent of the work they could do so far. Currently, we have the contractor in there doing drywall installation. He's been working out there for about two weeks now. And then in addition, once he's completed, staff can get back in there and finish up some of the bathroom items, installing the stalls and other fixtures in the restrooms, getting into floor tiles, ceiling tiles, cabinets. Staff will be making the cabinets to install there, and then finishing up the general site work on the outside landscaping and completion of electrical and sewer. Our next project is Along the River Walk. This is also being funded by ARPA funds. Back some time after Hurricane Florence, we replaced part of the River Walk fencing that was from Union Point Park and went under the bridge up to the convention center. And so now, we're going to be replacing from the convention center back around the River Walk by the Grand Marina up to the railroad tracks. So that'll be started soon, once we get through all the quote and approval to use the contractor that we're looking at using for that. And that fencing, I think, has been there for quite some time. I'm not sure on the number of years, but it does need to be replaced badly. All right, and then one of our biggest and favorites is the Stanley White Recreation Center. We have been working with the consultancy, P and L, Foster and I, various meetings. They are wrapping up their portion and getting ready for the bidding process. We hope to have the bidding open up in January. Fingers crossed, construction will be able to begin in March of 2023, and they're anticipating a fifteen-month construction time. They're in the process now of applying for permits and other things. They submitted the design to the city for review, and so they're moving right along with that. We anticipate them coming to do a presentation to the Board sometime towards the end of the year. All right, that's all my projects. Any questions?
Yes, ma'am. Can you explain to me, what is general site work?
General site work?
Mm-hmm. Site, S-I-T-E, work.
Yeah, after we're completed with the building, getting outside, clearing up the site around the building, installing any landscaping, grass that we need to install, tying in the electrical, the sewer, water, whatever needs to be completed on the outside.
Sidewalk as well into the building. Instead of the rock dust in the driveway, that'll be concrete. We're going to do it for accessibility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and the next item.
Thank you, Ms. Carey.
The next item is to give you a brief update on City Hall projects. Spoke with the project manager this morning on the elevator addition. Currently, they're at forty-five percent completion. They are working now on the inside of the building while they're waiting on the precast stone to be manufactured. So they are framing up the restrooms and the walls inside, and they are also working to dry in the roof area. They anticipate within the next few weeks, precast arriving, so then you're really going to see a change in the building as that progresses. The May completion date is still holding with them, and so we're also excited about that. So we also have a staircase reinforcement project. As some of you may know, we started having an issue on the, from the second floor going up to the third floor, where the stairwell was pulling apart from the exterior wall. So crews came in several weeks ago and started working to make sure that that was secure. In about two weeks, the plaster will be here to complete that part of it, and that project will be complete. And we received some funding from FEMA, about two hundred thousand for a brick repointing project on the exterior of City Hall. Funding will go to cover at least two sides, so in this current budget, we have approximately two hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund to cover the other two sides. So we bid that out about a month ago. We did have a successful bidder. Our architect, Oakley Collier, out of Rocky Mount, is working on the contracts right now, and we plan on bringing this to the Board by the December meeting for your review. One of the things that the contractor did note, and you can see it in a lot of the areas, there's a lot of broken coping and precasts throughout the building. And so there is going to be an option for the Board to look at additional funds to fix those while they are here doing that work. Anticipate the timeline to complete the repointing project of the building will be about six months from the time they start this project. And one last thing to tell you, with the City Three TV, starting on December first, you will be able to access that channel by a Roku device. So for those who like to stream their television and things, you can go onto Roku, click on the City of New Bern app, and you can watch that channel. So that's an exciting thing, where a lot more people will be able to see that channel. Do you want to have any questions?
Foster, real quick, is the staircase reinforcement issue, was that a pre-existing condition before the elevator addition was being put on, or was it something that was exacerbated or created by the new construction?
It wasn't created by.
It may have, and I may have to let Jordan or George, they may have a little bit more history on that. Do you, George?
It goes previous.
So it was not as a, as a result of the new project?
It's something that's been going on for quite some time. And it just began, you know, in my tent, in my do, in my been on board, that it was beginning to come apart more and more and more. So they called it just in time.
Well, I'm just thankful to members of the prior board and some of us. We really had a lot of discussions on this City Hall elevator. And I'd just like to give credit where credit is due. Alvin Bingo was one of the main ones, really instrumental in this elevator. And I think it's a project that's long overdue. And I just think, think everyone that was involved in agreeing to have to making this come to fruition. Thank you, Foster.
Yes, ma'am. This time, I'd like to ask Ms. Ostrom to give a finance update.
So the report that you actually have in front of you is the month that you, or the report that you see each month. And I just wanted to go over that with you. This is the Maltruson Report in September, just so that when you do receive this, you, you're able to understand what information it has that we're reporting to you. The first one is the Enterprise Funds, the Cash on Hand. Do you have this one happen? Okay, you have that? Um, the Enterprise Funds Cash on Hand, the first chart here is in, it captures how much cash we have on hand and then divides it, or how much cash is in the banking, divides it based on how much our expenditures are estimated to be, and then how far we can get on that cash, basically, is what it's reporting. And as you can see, for September thirtieth, our water fund had eleven point five million. The sewer fund had five point seven million, and the electric fund had a fifteen million, fifteen point two million. And then that bar that runs underneath each of those tells you how many days we would be able to make it on that, on that amount. So water fund being three hundred and thirty-one days, the sewer fund a hundred and forty-four days, and then electric fund ninety-four days.
Foster, I think, I think the drop, could you let the new members know the drop in electric was because of the MetroNet? That, that's correct. So the reason you see ninety-four days now as opposed to a hundred and thirty-five back to 2021 was we funded the MetroNet project. How much, many?
Three million.
Three million dollars we pulled out of fund balance to fund the expenses related to the MetroNet installation. And that also included hiring some staff as project coordinators to work with MetroNet along with city staff.
So the bar charts below that is just a picture view, which includes that orange line, which is the benchmark for the, the minimum piece cash on hand per hour policy that the board adopted back in December. So if you take a look at that orange bar for water fund, it sits at two hundred and forty days, and we're above that. The electric fund is ninety days minimum, and we're riding that right now. And then the sewer fund is a hundred and seventy-five days minimum. You can see that we are consistently below the policy, but we've been able to maintain. So since we're consistently below, you can choose to just continue as is. And then if you start to see a drop, we can talk about, or if we're concerned, we can talk about what needs to be done to bring up that cash, which would be reducing expenses or increasing rates. If we go, do you have questions on this first report, the Cash on Hand report for utilities?
The, the benchmark that we, obviously, we created that benchmark.
Yes.
What, what was it, Jordan, maybe you remember the criteria that we use for the sewer benchmark?
On all three of the utility funds, the benchmarks that were established in 2014 were part of a very complex calculation, if I remember correctly, that had to do with revenue bond financing, maintaining a certain level of cash on hand. So, and one thing you'll notice in the, the chart there, the sewer fund's a good example. The cash is actually built over the last few years, actually adding cash there. The cost of doing business every day has gone up. So how many, how many days could we fund the operation with that cash goes down. So even though we're adding money to the bank, our days of cash on hand is decreasing because it's just getting more expensive to operate.
So, so maybe at some point in time, we should revisit the benchmarks we created because that was based off of revenue bonds, and if that's been satisfied and we're no longer utilizing that form of financing, maybe?
But you acknowledge, I think those, those numbers have existed since 2014. We've just carried those through as, as benchmarks as it's been most. It's probably a good idea to take a look at those at some point in the near future.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the second page is the general fund cash on hand. This report tells you where, what we have in cash for general funds, and it also shows you the impact of the hurricane funds and how those outstanding expenditures negatively, negatively impact our overall general fund cash on hand. This first chart up here will show you that we have nine, as of September thirtieth, nineteen point eight million dollars for general fund. And then, once you reduce the outstanding expenditures for the three hurricane funds there, it's fourteen point nine million is our net amount. So then the second chart shows the fund balance, which these are two very different things. The fund balance takes your, all of your assets and liabilities into consideration and your, you know, revenues over expenses or under expenses. And that shows you where we sit as a whole, right? And then at the end of the year, we have these, the first three columns here with the 2019, 2020, 2021 are audited fund balances and the fund balance percentages. We estimate throughout the year, once we get the 2022 audit finished, we'll have a, a good number to start at, and then we'll be able to calculate an estimate throughout the year that we try to provide. But because it's such a complex calculation with different restrict, with restricted revenues, that we didn't, it's too close to the audit report, we didn't report that yet for six thirty. However, so when we go and look at the unassigned fund balance over to the left there, and then the unassigned fund balance excluding the hurricane funds, you can see how the hurricane funds affect us there as well. So if we take a look at last year's audited numbers, we had thirty percent fund balance, and then that was including the hurricane funds, and then excluding them, it was almost forty-seven percent. The, um-
Kim, could you, could you explain the difference in the net general fund estimate of fourteen-nine and the total fund balance net of hurricane funds at eighteen-six?
Yes, so you're talking about the cash versus the fund balance.
Correct.
Up at the top, you're talking about what cash we have on hand. The fund balance includes all of our assets and liabilities, so it may be revenues we haven't received. So for this one, we have a lot built out to FEMA for revenue or for reimbursements, and we've not received it yet. So that takes that and includes it as an asset for us because we anticipate on receiving it. We've built it out. So that's the difference. That's why you see those changes, is it's got our revenue that's due in and our expenses that are due out that are included in that. The top one is cash only.
Kim, does this include the one point one million that's just been obligated?
The, the one that they just paid, the one point eight?
Just been paid, yeah.
Um, the cash does not because we hadn't received it yet. We just got the notification. I believe that was included in the billing that we received, so that would have been part of the, in that second chart. That would have been included in there. That's why, that's one of the reasons why you see that difference.
And we're supposed to receive that funding or that check by Christmas?
We should.
Good.
I think it usually takes them about six weeks after they send that notification.
I think they say forty-five days.
So I, I would like to comment, though, that we have really worked hard to request reimbursements timely, regularly, and then close out those projects that we can close out. So there is quite a bit that we're waiting on FEMA to reimburse us for, which you'll see in the next chart. If you look at the, the third bar, you know, the bar graph down at the bottom, that gives you a picture view of where we are at as well as that, the markers, the, the threshold. So the orange threshold is the lowest with, for our policy, which is twenty-five percent. And the blue one is the, where we kind of want to be. LGC is at eight percent minimum, which we, we don't have that benchmark there, but I did want to note that. And then that bar graph to the left, the blue bar graph is the total fund balance, and then the green next to it is, is impacted by the hurricane funds. Do you have any questions on this page? So moving on to the third page is the FEMA reconciliation. This isn't every single FEMA project, but the ones that are significant enough. The projects are listed to the left of the chart. It shows how much FEMA has obligated for that project, total project. Some of them are included together based on funds such as sewer and electric. The amount that's been paid by the city so far, how much we've received from FEMA, and then the amount that's been reimbursed for each of those. Then we have payments that aren't processed. These are payments that we actually have been notified that they're issuing that payment. So as of September thirtieth, that's, they had only notified us that we were receiving that thirty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars there. And then we've built out and are waiting on reimbursements in an amount of six million dollars. That's due from FEMA, so that's the amount that we've actually built out. There are some that they can't pay us quite yet because our administrative pay that we're requesting for is a little bit higher. We have to have some of those project expenses in order to be able to get the additional admin pay. We have a couple of those that are pending closeout. That's where you see a number two in the notes, the ones that are pending closeout. So we've spent all of that and built for all of it.
So the due from FEMA on sewer, for example, the four eighty-five?
Mm-hmm.
That will get added to the sewer days cash on hand when we receive it, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Same with the other ones? Electric, for example, the six forty-three will then be added to the electric fund's cash on hand?
It'll be, it'll be added to the general fund because it's all netted against the general fund. Those ones are on that report.
Will it go back to apply for days of cash on hand?
Yes. So it'll come back in, and then it will be removed from the negative impact, from, basically, the negative impact from hurricane funds will be reduced. So it'll decrease our cash on hand, yes.
I'm sorry.
I, I'm just, under police and fire and then under sewer, footnote number one, admin pay higher than amount obligated?
Um, I would have to look into that just to be sure, but from what I recall, I think those are the ones that we had a more administrative pay than what they had allocated.
Greater than five percent of the project?
Right.
Okay.
And so they, we can get some of that back if, yeah.
And, and you'll get quite a bit of that, that back as well when you receive that one point one million dollars in the next few weeks? Does that count towards CAT-Z?
Um, I'm not sure on that.
That should add five percent of that one point one.
I think that was the one that we closed out, so then it would be, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
You don't have, I'm sorry to keep asking this question, but you, you do not have a current CAT-Z estimate, do you?
Um, it's, I, I'd have to check with Ken Rose, but I think that's under that management costs.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The line that says management costs.
Yeah?
I think that's what she's, she's lumped that together there. But I will check with her.
All right, where is that one I had?
Um, two, next one down.
Oh, okay. Got you, okay, thank you.
That makes sense, makes sense to me.
Yep.
I'm, I'm confused. So you're saying that part of the, the admin pay was higher, okay? So, but we got only due back almost six hundred thousand from FEMA? And it was because you had more management costs in that?
I would have to look at the detail of the grant, or of the project, but there are some projects that we have where the administrative, you're only allowed to, to receive a certain percentage back on the administrative costs.
Right, right.
So some of that has exceeded.
Okay.
Now, when you send, close out the award, all of that goes in, and they will reimburse you up to that full amount if, if they allow it, if they okay it. So that's one issue with some of them. So they'll go above and beyond what they actually allocated. And then the other thing is we have more administrative costs that we've calculated than what we're allowed to draw down on just yet because we need those base expenditures to be submitted. So if the project is, a project expenditures outside of the administrative expense isn't up at that seventy-five percent amount yet, then we can't draw down on that. Am I making it more confusing?
No, basically, we have to get the money before we can get the admin, I mean, the management pay. So-
You have to have that base expenditures first, yeah.
So as we receive, when we close out a project, as we receive funding, we will receive funding for the admin pay as well? Right?
Yeah, you can, you can request some of the admin pay, but you can't request all of it until the project, you have more of those project costs.
It would be like somebody doing work at your house, and they want to put a new roof on it, it's going to be ten thousand dollars, and they've only done a quarter of the roof, and they want you to pay them for half of it. Is that, I'm trying to make it as simple as possible.
And then there's some of those cases, too, where we spend a tremendous amount of time fighting for a cause that FEMA decided wasn't worthy. So you, you're going to have some of that.
So the next chart is the circle chart, where it says at the top the debt mix aggregate for summary by funds. So this is just a quick picture of our debt based on the funds. And you can see that water fund, but thirty-seven point oh nine percent of this is at, that's sixteen point five million. The electric is the blue, the fifteen point zero six percent, that's three point eight, almost three point nine million of debt. And then sewer is the sixteen point eight four percent, and that's two point, almost two point five million. And then general fund is the red, that's about thirteen point nine million with twenty-nine percent. So that was just a quick picture to show you where, what funds have, consist of what debt, of the amount of debt. The second chart is a bar chart that shows you our payout, our debt service over time. And the FY twenty-three is eight point six million. We dropped down in F-
Which is the first bar?
It looks like it's down, yeah.
It's what, eight point six million?
I'm wondering if it's cut off even more though, because it says two thousand twenty-four. So fiscal year twenty-three is eight point six million. Fiscal year twenty-four is five point four. So we have a reduction there of three point two. And then in FY twenty-five, it's four point five million. Um, FY twenty-six, you're looking at four point three million. And then FY twenty-seven is three million.
Kim, does this take into account the debt service for City Hall and Stanley White?
City Hall.
But it does not take in consideration Stanley White?
Not, not until we go out and secure that debt. And that won't be until we receive our bidding back and the board takes that up first of the year.
I did want to note that all funds are total debt is almost, um, thirty-seven point four million. And then general fund was, is sitting at thirteen point nine million. The next, um, report is our ARPA funds report, which you've seen before with the, um, with the board meetings when we submitted these. This is, uh, all the projects on the top here are the ones that have been approved by the board to move forward with. And, um, and their, and their corresponding award. And then the second section there under the peach is the ones that we've talked about, maybe need to seek some more estimates. They're just, um, ideas and, and things that you guys have had discussion about. And then the only two boards that have funds available right now based on that is, uh, Ward Three with one million and Ward Six with seven hundred and twenty-two thousand eight ninety-two. Um, I went to the, uh, School of Government, um, and the League of Municipalities had a, uh, ARPA presentation. I met with the attorney that's handling, um, some of the direction that they're providing the municipalities. And we have been recommended right from the beginning, um, as soon as the ten million standard allocation was issued for revenue replacement, um, anybody that had received up to that amount was recommended that you select that. And so we did. But we've received more guidance from the School of Government and she has highly recommended that we do an amendment to our, um, project fund so that we indicate that. You'll see that at the next board meeting, November twenty-second. And then also, you know, spend on those funds on salaries and benefits. Um, and then close that project fund out. And what you do is you take those funds and then now they are in the general fund and you commit them for your ARPA projects. What that does is it lists all the restrictions, the administrative burden, and allows you to spend the funds on anything that is, um, that you have authority to do so. So we talked about that during our presentation, um, gosh, it's probably been a year now. But now we're going to, we have more, uh, guidelines and, and have got some specific language and then we'll be bringing that to you at the November twenty-second meeting. So your projects will all be the same, all of that, nothing changes there. It's just that, and that's why you'll see it is referenced as ARPA-enabled funds. So basically with that ARPA money that's allowed you to offset expenditures and then spend your, um, that money, what you would've, what you would've received as, um, your projects that you've listed here.
Any, any que-, I know that will confuse him and we'll come back to that when she brings this to the board. But it's basically some planning that, those things pay for. One of the things that qualifies as the majority of, uh, local governments have received under ten million to do so we can free up literally general fund money to, to complete those projects that has currently been approved by the board. Kim, did you have anything else?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Kim?
Thank you, Kim.
All right. This time, the mayor, if you'd like, uh, Kim is having a break and I think we'll get back on schedule with these, these final three items that we have.
Discuss public safety, you want to skip that?
Uh, no, I think you can do it, but I think we're going to see the time change.
Okay.
So if you'd like to go ahead and do a breakdown and we'll come back and.
All right, board will take a ten-minute recess. Aye, aye, in your post, recess. Right, we are back on schedule, Mr. Hughes.
Yes, sir, our next item is to discuss public safety. At this time, I'd like to ask Chief Gallagher to come up and give a, a brief presentation on, on where things stand at some point.
Foster. Fire Department's going to go first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Chief, Chief Boyd then. Chief Boyd, I'm, I'm sorry, I head down here.
He did fire first because he'd get the man with the gun to get you out of there if you're not done in time.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Board. I just want to say thank you for having the confidence in me to, to lead what I consider one of the premier fire departments in eastern North Carolina. In the interest of time, I'm going to just kind of get through this very quickly, but I would like to extend an invitation to each and every one of you to come by the office and talk to us and learn more about your fire department. So on page one, you'll see some vision and goals. They're explanatory, you can just read through them. They've got some accomplishments underneath that that, that we feel like are some major accomplishments. The biggest one that sticks out to me out of those is our FEMA grant we received for our self-taught breathing apparatus. And under ongoing projects, you'll see, I think the biggest one on that one that's important to me was we have worked with the county fire chiefs to improve our mutual aid and our interoperability. Then you'll have some what I consider, or we consider as it from the fire department, a couple of major needs. The first one is a need of some, a fire station and twelve to fifteen personnel in the highway forty-three quarter response area. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, but if you'll look through that, basically what it's going to do is help us with that area on our response times. And there's definitely some gaps. Our simultaneous calls have increased by thirty percent in that area and the number of calls have increased. And we're currently having issues of meeting the NFPA seventeen-ten, which requires us to be there in a certain amount of time.
Kim, Chief, did we ever get, I know we had a verbal commitment from Warehouser. Did we ever get anything formal from them?
Nothing formal, we just had the verbal at this point. Where Jordan got off, yes.
How can we work on getting that finalized?
I thought that was finalized.
In, in my last conversation with Jordan Hughes, it had not been finalized, there was a lot of discussion, but nothing in writing. So we'll definitely work on getting that taken care of.
Yeah, I think probably because of survey for the new road and all that being not, not determined.
They gave us a nice plot plan with all everything on, but it's just verbal.
How many miles is it now about from the, uh, our chief, from the, um, Station Four to your first five-story building, or four-story building?
Which, are we talking about Elizabeth or Thurman? Elizabeth.
I, what did I say?
I don't know, that's why.
Elizabeth.
Elizabeth, that new.
The first dude.
It's, it's literally over five miles out to, to where we're trying to put the fire station. But that's not what bothers us the most, is the response times that we have of getting to there in the simultaneous calls. The next one was, would be the Thurman, West Thurman Road Fire Station. Currently, we are staffed with six personnel out there. We have an, an engine and a truck. We need additional six more personnel in there. And with the highway semi-construction, has anybody ridden through James City lately? You know, it's a hint or it's to, uh, person for us to be able to come out of our headquarters station, respond over there. So the additional six personnel in that firehouse will allow us to keep our tower in our headquarters station and not have to respond. Next you see is some statistics I brought to you. Basically, this is just comparing January to October twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-two. And it's giving you the percentages and the types of calls that we have. Mutual aid. This is a one that we have implemented in the past few years and I would like to show you where we are. So basically, you've got a comparison between twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two on the mutual aid received, mutual aid given, automatic aid received, and automatic aid given. Uh, we have collaborated with the Craven County Fire Chiefs developing a mutual aid agreement a couple of years ago. And it's critical to have partnerships and interoperability. We train together. We have implemented similarities in our apparatus identification and provided methods of interoperability with our radio. This has allowed us to continue providing the best service to our community. And one of the things that we implemented with that was a response plan. What that response plan does, it automatically dispatches the department, for example, just what we talked about, the distance of having to drive through James City and respond to that. What we have done is identified volunteer fire departments that surround that area and we have put them on automated dispatch anytime a call comes in for a fire call. So they're coming at the same time we're coming, so hopefully they can get here quicker. But understanding they're going to have the same issues that we have and travel through there. But we're trying everything we can to make things better with what we have. Next one you'll see is our response by stations, comparing again twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-two. It represents a twenty percent increase. Basically, what I would like to say today and make, and it kind of ties into my needs with growth in our city comes accountability to meet the needs. We're known for being creative and making things work, such as our collaboration efforts that we have done with the county's volunteer fire departments. Eventually, we run out of options and the fire department needs to grow to match the city's growth. My responsibility as the fire chief is to look forward and justify where it needs to be. Next, you'll see a graph for our fire prevention. You only will see a comparison of this year because we've just recently started tracking fire prevention to different aspects. As you can see from the graph and track, we track and evaluate everything our fire prevention bureau provides. Just assist us in determining that we are making a difference. I want to make sure, especially new members on the board, and I'm sure the elements have heard we say this over the years, prevention is our number one responsibility as a fire department. If we can prevent something from occurring or educate our community how to do our, how to reduce risk, lives are saved. A good example of that would be unattended cooking fires is our number one cause. So if we're tracking the education piece of this and the risk piece of this, we can identify certain areas of town that we maybe have an issue with unattended cooking fires. What does that tell us as a fire department? Let's go do some educational programs. Let's go do some, make sure these people are doing like this so we can educate them to do. Number one, hopefully prevent it from occurring in the first place. And also, if it does occur, what they can do to help mitigate and save themselves. So prevention, whenever I hire a new fire person, a firefighter in the fire department, that's the first thing I ask them. What is our number one job? Typically, you hear fight fires, rescue. No, it's not. Prevention is our number one job. If we can prevent it from occurring in the first place, we've done our job. Last, you'll see the heat map, which is for your education piece. Basically, what it does is all the calls that have occurred from January of this year through October and the different types and where they're located. And it helps us to be able to look at and say, hey, this part of town is starting to heat up. Are we having proper coverage? We can go back and look at statistics. Again, it's real important, this is very fast, very brief. I know it's a lot of information in a short amount of time. Please, please, come by the fire station and talk to us. There's so many things these guys do day in and day out that the average person doesn't know. Come help you get yourself educated on what we do. Any questions that you might have, feel free to call me. I'm always there to answer. Any questions for today?
Chief, are you still putting, uh, free of, uh, homes?
You're still doing smoke detector canvases, it's a program, education program.
You know, to prepare for this year's upcoming budget, we probably need to prepare ourselves for what the fire department's needs are going to be. We've been asking for years now and now that there's all types of construction taking place on a station on the forty-three corridor, uh, which is going to, building that's the easy part, we all know that. It's manning and buying the apparatus is the hard part. But we might as well prepare ourselves. We can't continue with a five-mile, over five-mile response time to get to some of these multi-story structures that are out in the West New Bern subdivision. So I think it's real, I, I think, I think this board needs to have a conversation because he's got a lot of needs. There's still a need on, on Thurman Road. I don't know, how many apartments did they just build across the street from, uh, from Harris Teeter out there? Multi-story apartments out there? It must be three or four hundred.
It's just to live in ninety-six units there.
And how many, what about the apartments of?
Apartments, I don't know the exact number, but it's.
There's got to be. George, would you know by any chance how many's out there? Okay, and then on top of that, they're getting ready to build a big medical complex out there. And on top of that, the road construction projects creating all kinds of problems. So we know there's a definite need in Barbara's Ward. And we know there's a, a need in, um, the, on the, at the Thurman Road House as well. And, and we all know that we can't do it all at one time. So we need to sit down and have, whether it's whenever we would need to have it, but we need to come up with a list of priorities for what we're going to do for this fire department to, to get it where it needs to be, especially in the West New Bern and, and the Thurman Road area. You know, when I was fire chief, we were experiencing eight, ten calls a week. Now you're, what's your average daily call, fifteen?
We're about forty-five a week. It varies, about eighty or ten today.
So, you know, and again, a fire truck at twenty years old with sixty or seventy thousand miles was just about what we would expect. With the way they're running now, these fire trucks aren't going to last twenty years anymore. He's already got one that was flooded during the hurricane that's been out of commission, more than it's been in commission as a result of that flood. So there's, there's some big needs in this department that we need to be prepared for in the upcoming budget. How do you want to go about doing that?
Sounds, sounds like a work session discussion item.
Yes.
Very well could be.
We, we can obviously take it up as a work session. Of course, after the first of the year, we've got the budget retreat where each department will come back and, and talk to you about proposed needs that are coming up in the future. But also want to remind you that there is, there is money in the fire department's current budget for them to do some planning for a proposed fire station. And so I'll, I'll talk with the chief to see where they stand on that.
It's kind of hard to, I reckon it's kind of hard to do planning there until you get a piece of property identified, isn't it? I mean, don't you kind of have to build the fire station to fit the property?
Well, the funds, the funds were designed for us to start the process, but that was kind of put a stop for it temporarily until we determine where we're going.
The location?
Location's there, just got to get the finalized of having it. Here it is, here's your piece of property.
So you're saying that sixty-five thousand dollars that's in the budget there, that's been put on hold for that feasibility study because of the property with Warehouser? For the, I'm talking about West New Bern?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, I, I'm, I read somewhere and I thought that it was finalized with the Warehouser property.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
We'll get an update, we'll get an update. Now, maybe I'll update you at the, at the meeting on Tuesday.
And, and Bobby, I have to concur with you, excuse me, Alderman Astor, I have to concur with you and with the information that Chief has given her, us here today with the, with the thirty percent increase in, in call volume and then that gap in response time, we're looking at, you know, this is, this is a priority issue and we're talking about saving lives and somebody's, some, you know, people's properties. And then you've got all of this construction, all of the apartments that's going up, homes that's going up, um, in the area. I just, the, like you said, Chief, this is something that you have been bringing to this prior, the prior board and now you're bringing it to us about the need for these two fire stations. And, and I agree, and I know Alderman Astor in his ward, I'm not going to categorize it, but due to all of that forty-two interstate construction and stuff, that's going to be an issue. And, and, and we really do need to, I think, now this is one of the times we need to get together and have a meeting and discuss this.
It's something, something, I mean, we just need to be prepared to when Chief comes to the budget session and says, this is what I'm asking for, we don't say, oh my God. You know, we need to determine, let, give him some guidance as to what our first steps are going to be at, that we're going to try to budget for, starting in the next year's budget.
Well, I mean, already in the budget, you have sixty-five thousand five hundred dollars for a feasibility study for the West New Bern. for feasibility study for the West New Bern. So, I mean, I don't know what was in budget for you, I didn't, um, for your area, but.
Nothing.
Yeah, okay, well, I, I know I saw that, so that right there's a start, that money can start that study, but like you say, we got to have the property.
And George working on that for us, but he's a big part of that negotiation because there's, or things going to be, and there's some other things happening.
Yeah, right, right, right.
And one thing I'll say, the chief does, always does a great job each year about, about letting you know what the needs are.
Exactly.
And he.
But he lets us know what the needs are, but we kind of let the needs roll off our shoulders, we haven't taken any action. We, it's time for us to take action. You know, we, we were kind of putting off the forty-three stuff until West New Bern was started to develop, or if it was going to ever be developed. You go out there now, and it's, it's huge, you know, with the number of apartments and stuff that's going out there, it's time to put something out there. Many of us remember the response time it took to get some emergency personnel to the water treatment plant several years ago. Now, we just don't need that kind of stuff to happen anymore.
Exactly.
I, I would, I would support today, uh, three quick response vehicles, put one in each, one in each station. That helps with the wear and tear on the engine that Alderman Astor mentioned, and it would, I would assume, if you get a medical call, that a four-door Jeep or Bronco or something's going to get there quicker than an engine would.
But the problem, are you going to hire the personnel to go along with it?
Well.
That's it, that's the problem. You can't split these crews up, you can't send a four-man engine company and take two of them off and send them to one side of town, and they're, and they'd be tied up, and the engine get called to the other side of town, and now they can't do anything because they don't meet OSHA regulations?
All right, so let me ask you this, so let's say that we, we have this discussion every year, and I look forward to it. So you put your six-man crew on the engine, and you go to somebody who's having a heart attack, and a call comes in for a fire, what do you do then?
There's the chief asking.
Don't we have mutual aid in place for that? Hopefully, mutual aid?
Well, number one, yeah, we're there to assist EMS, because, so if we're there, EMS is there, and we also have backup apparatus that cover calls, but if, if we're able to be released, we're going to be released.
So, so my point with that is, if you send two people on a medical call, and four stay at the station, and you just happen to have a structural fire call while two people are attending to a heart attack victim, EMS gets there, release the two, they hop in their quick response vehicle, and they go meet the engine at the fire, is that?
With the same number of personnel you have now? That's it.
I don't, I don't think it's smart, that's just my opinion, and the reason it's not smart is because, number one, you're splitting up an apparatus, that, now you're having to drive two vehicles to that. Now, I would totally agree with the quick response vehicles.
Yeah.
I, I think that's a smart thing to do, but I think you need, we need to look at the whole big picture. It might need, not have to have two, we might be able to live around some personnel to get one there and then hire one more. Not saying that it's not feasible to look at other things, but for us to split up, I think you're, now you're making two apparatus to go to alarm activation, you're making two vehicles to go to these calls, but one's taking them.
Well, and the other. That would only be if you had overlapping calls.
I'm sorry?
That would only be if you had overlapping calls.
No.
Only, if you're saying, if they got another call coming in.
So you got, you got, you got six guys.
I, I feel what you're going at, I say, all apparatus, our first duty is supposed to have four people, we're required to have four people and one apparatus is our first duty, that's DOI required, right? So basically, to get those four people, you'd have to take two appar, two vehicles to get to that scene to get those four people.
That's, that's if you're having an overlapping, how many, let me ask you this, how many, how many guys are on shift?
Alarm activation comes in here today.
Right.
One apparatus is required to come, it's alarm activation, it's required to have four people. Don't care how I get those four people there, it's required to have four people and one pumper as part of this alarm activation. And my argument to you is, why would you take two vehicles to make that happen when I got one? I'm not saying we can't revamp and look at the big picture and try to move some things around, so that still happens, that we might have some access here, but I, but I agree with you, quick response vehicles is probably smart because you're taking wear and tear off an apparatus on.
Well, let's, let's do that first, let's, let's come to the agreement that we need a quick response vehicle, all three fire stations, can we all agree with that?
Well, wait, let me, another issue, another issue is this, and you can drive within twenty-five miles of New Bern and find out where this just happened. Once those two people that are on that squad start receiving enough, start attending enough medical calls, they are no longer firemen.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I did not mean for it to go down this path.
Oh, no, this is great.
It's a thing that needs to be talked about, but.
We need to go down the path either today or in the works.
The days are short, and I tried to speed this thing up, but I would love to talk about it, but I think, I think it, that's just my opinion, I'll be where you want me to do, you're, you're the boss.
Well, here, here's what I'd like to see, I'd like to see a report with overlapping calls, by station.
Okay, we can do that for you.
Frequency, duration, what type of calls they were.
It's any report, I think, not per, per station, but they are in there, in the, in what type of calls it is, if you're in a month of report.
And it shows overlapping, like, there's two calls at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, good.
So chief, I, I was coming in when I heard, um, you were speaking of, um, being at risk of not meeting the seventeen-ten requirement?
That's correct.
What, can you just briefly?
That, that ties into what Mayor Ed was talking about, is having that apparatus with four people being on scene within four minutes.
Okay.
So as, as you, as your area grows out, and you start having call volume in these areas, you're not meeting those four minutes with one apparatus and four people.
So what, what, what risk is that to the city of New Bern Fire Department?
Well, we adopted NFPA seventeen-ten as a city.
Okay. So, I mean, what kind of violation?
We're basically breaking policy, we're breaking recommendations, we're breaking what NFPA has recommended to us.
Okay, okay.
I think it's, I think you're right, I think this would, a, a couple hours, sit down, work session prior to budget, whether it's during the budget retreat or not, but we need to have a better understanding and give Chief Boyd some guidance as to what he can and shouldn't be asking for in next year's budget, and then maybe even the following year's budget. But there's a lot of needs here, it's been, it's been brewing for many years, and it's time to start resolving some of them. I know Mayor helped resolve some of the issues a few years back, but we, we, we got, up, up, like I said, we got a quint that's almost completely out of service. It is a quint, right? Bobby?
Quint of flood, yes.
Uh, yeah, because of the flooding, and it spends more time in the shop than it does in the field right now. Is it in the shop now?
It's in the shop now.
Okay. So, we got to address that as well.
Well, I, I, you said give the chief what he needs, and he's giving us right here on this paper what we need for your area and my area of two fire departments, so, you know, it's a no-brainer to me, I mean, we have, we have to protect our citizens, and, and I know since I, my first initial day sitting upon this board, um, the chief has come to us every year talking about the need, and, and, and we see right now the numbers are growing, so each year's going to grow even more because of all the development, residential and commercial, so, um, if we, if this is something the chief can have for us and at our, um, upcoming, um, retreat, and that'd be great.
I would also covet any questions that you might have that would help answer some of the things that you might have looked for in that meeting also. I have to make sure I have that data and that information prepared.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Well, chief, let me ask you one question. Um, to put a fire department out in West New Bern, is there restrictions of how far it needs to be off of the main highway or roadway or whatever? It doesn't matter?
It's just to have access, it's just to have, have quick access to that.
Okay, all right. The reason why I was saying that is because, well, I'll discuss that with you later.
Okay, now we've got Chief Gallagher to give the police update.
Thank you. Board members, mayor, uh, I will attempt to be, uh, brief, informative with the least amount of time, but I am available to any of the members that wish to have further conversation. Um, we seek to be as transparent as we possibly can. The first slide I want to, uh, uh, provide is an overview of our community, police, and districts. Unfortunately, our community, police, and districts do not marry with the, uh, with awards. So many of our, many of the wards that you represent, uh, cross over into multiple, uh, community, police, and districts. What I provided on this particular slide is the number of calls for service that we've received over the course of twenty-twenty-two and the response times. The outlier in this is, um, the battleground district, which is, um, the Taberna and Carolina Colors area, but what you can see in terms of sheer numbers is it has by far the fewest number of calls for service, um, and its proximity to the rest of the city does create a little bit of an issue with respect to calls, uh, the response times. Uh, but as you can see, for the, uh, for the rest of the, uh, city, our response time is, um, adequate enough, uh, should be able to have a patrol car dispatched and on scene in less than five minutes. Um, the points of contact, when I talk about wanting to be as transparent as possible and be able to provide, um, each of you with, uh, information that you may need or requests that you may have, what we have done internally is assign, um, our executive staff to one of you, and as you can see in this slide, um, I am the representative for the mayor, if he has, uh, or need to reach me for questions, and Captain Daniel Fuller and Markey Brown is there to, uh, answer any of your questions, uh, that you may have. Oftentimes, what you may see is, um, you may have a question, and they will respond, I will get back to you. And part of my expectations to staff is that they address your concerns immediately and be able to provide you with that information that, that you requested. Unfortunately, we have some competing interests, um, in a law enforcement, in a law enforcement context, there is certain information we just simply cannot, um, provide, but oftentimes, what I've seen that you've asked for is, is not confidential information, and we will seek to get you that information as soon as possible. I think that's, that's critically important because we understand that our citizens, um, elected you, you represent them, and we want to be responsive, not just to you, but to the men and women a, a, and all the people that either live, work, or vacation here in New Bern. What this slide provides is specific to gun violence only, and I, I think this is important in the context of what we've been dealing with, um, over the course of the past, uh, four, four weeks. What I've done here is to simplify this data so that it's an apple-to-apple comparison, is this is gun violence that resulted in one of three categories. Either it's verified gun violence where there's no injury, no death, but we have verified, uh, property damage. Another category is where we have an injury, and then the third category is the worst of that is a, a homicide, we have somebody who has lost their lives. In this particular slide, it is year-to-date information for all three, all five years, from, um, January one to October seventeenth. So this data is specific to each one of those years, specific to those, uh, ten months and seventeen days. What you'll see from this is twenty-twenty-two, the data does not show a spike. The data actually shows that we are well within the norm for, for a five-year period, in fact, uh, maybe a little bit less, but compared to last year, we're not seeing that spike. But what we have seen is we've, we've seen this gun violence erupt towards the end of, of this, um, evaluation period. I think this is important for context. The other thing I want to point out is, we have had three homicides in twenty-twenty-two, and knock on wood, that will be it. Of those three, one of those homicides was not illegal. Murder is illegal, homicide is not necessarily legal, one of those was justifiable. So we've had two, uh, murders that, um, are reflected in this data, but it, but we had three homicides, I think that's important. This slide is the same five-year comparison, um, but with respect to all park one crimes. So a, a, as you see, we go from homicide rate, aggravated assault, robbery, burglary, larceny, um, motor vehicle theft, theft of a motor vehicle, and arson. This slide also provides a little bit more context in terms of what I'll show you in just a second, in terms of what the stats are, um, across North Carolina and likely across the nation. Um, with respect to homicides, we, we've seen a, a decrease in homicides, but aggravated assaults in the city of New Bern is likely going to be up because we still have the balance of, of November and December of this year. This slide right here is year-to-date data for a full twelve-month period in the state of North Carolina, and for that data, we can only extrapolate twenty-twenty data, and as you can see from this, murder and aggravated assaults are significantly higher throughout the state, um, and we're seeing, um, that New Bern is, is similar to what is going on throughout the state, and most other categories, like it is in New Bern, property crimes, um, have been reduced, um, so we're marrying what's going on there. This slide is important, and it will speak a little bit about something I'm going to talk about that happened last night in our city. This is a scatter plot, uh, heat map, which reflects the likelihood of gun violence based on the, um, amount of gun violence we've had this year. So the, uh, the, what you see here is, based on that data, we can predict where future gun violence will occur. And as you can see in this particular slide, um, the Duffy Field area has the greatest likelihood of gun violence. The reason why I want to show this map speaks to, um, our deployment strategy based on this. Um, we, we seek to use evidence-based, intelligence-led policing strategies to deploy our resources. Last night, we had our staff, um, concentrating on this area, and just north of that, uh, heat map, uh, one of our officers that was patrolling, heard gunfire, observed a vehicle fleeing the scene at a high rate of speed. Over the course of the next four to five hours, the investigation resulted in the arrest of three adults. We are likely arresting a seventeen-year-old, and there will be another adult that will be facing multiple charges, um, involved in that shooting. So the deployment strategy is working, placing staff in those locations, um, that has a more likely propensity for violence is one way, uh, that we're able to address, um, of these, uh, these violent crimes. This, I'll go over this relatively quickly, uh, because this is something that I spoke to at the last Board of Alderman meeting. Of the major incidences that we had in October, we have solved three of, of the five. We still have a shooting on New Bern Avenue, we still have a homicide, uh, on, uh, November eighth. We are hopeful that we will be able to solve both of those. I will say, since the arrest on October seventeenth, we have not seen, um, the same, um, outcome of violence that, that we've seen over that short period of time. Um, I will say that the, uh, incident at Fort Totten was an opportunity to celebrate not only what the police department did, but what the staff at the Capfielden was able to do in terms of providing very quick information and, uh, surveillance photos to our staff, that as they responded, one officer responds to the location of the crime, and the other officers are patrolling the immediate area looking for our suspect, and within minutes of this, um, a subject was identified, was stopped, preliminary investigation revealed that the prerequisite probable cause for his arrest occurred, and we recovered not only the weapon that he used, but all the money that was taken. So there's a celebration in terms of, of the cooperative relationship between law enforcement and the victims at that scene and witnesses. I'll also state that the police department, um, condu- I'll also state that the police department conducted a safety audit of Fort Totten, and we're working with the city leadership to provide recommendations on how best to move forward at that facility. The action plans that we took immediately after October 17th was to, to increase our presence within the community, as I indicated at the last Board of Alderman meeting. We partnered with the Sheriff's Department, and we coordinated our investigative staff and the information and intelligence we had gathered to help formulate our deployment strategy. I can say again, I will, I will repeat this, we have not seen the same level of violence since that arrest on 17th. So I'll just leave it at that. The tip 411 is a program that has become very helpful to us. It has resulted in many tips that are coming in. Hopefully, our community will understand that our ability to be successful is reliant on their willingness to provide us with the needed information to make a case. One of the realities in the criminal justice system is that having a theory and knowing information relating to a criminal event does not necessarily mean we will have the prerequisite probable cause to make an arrest. We have a lot of information. We know a lot of people. We have, we're very confident in what we have to make in the case, and we need witnesses that are willing to come forward to help us, to help the community make it safe. So we continue to leverage what we can within the community in the hopes that these acts of violence will be reduced. My last comment will be this. Over the course of the past 18 months and the amount of effort that we have put into addressing violent crimes, specifically drug dealing and gun violence, is paying off. It is recognized within the criminal element within New Bern and Craven County that this area is, is not a place that is conducive with, with criminality. And we're hopeful that it becomes well-known that if you do commit a crime, don't do it in New Bern, and don't do it in Craven County. So I'm happy to answer your questions, and I hope I was as brief as I could be and informative as I could be.
Well, Chief, I thank you for what you're doing. I see the presence is very, very strong. I see that this type of behavior is not going to be tolerated here in the city. And I am so thankful to, to see that you are doing just that and continuing. And what is it that the board can do to help you? What do you need?
Well, in, in working with the city manager and assistant city manager in terms of strategizing our resources, you are funding my department, and I appreciate that. Some of the recommendations that we are proposing in terms of making retention, something that is feasible within my department. I think we're going to talk about pay and benefits and those types of things. Those would be certainly helpful in terms of us being able to recruit for our vacant positions and retaining the talent that we do have here.
I feel we're going to take good care of that.
Thank you.
So is not anything else that you know at this moment that we can do besides the pay, the pay raise and I guess a few other things?
Well, I'm, I'm prepared to present that at our next meeting. I certainly don't want to go over the heads of my bosses. It, it is, you know, we all want, to be candid with you, every director would, would like to have a blank check. And if you want to give me five blank checks, I will, I will certainly fill in the, the figures, but I will work with the city leadership to be able to provide you with those things that the police department will.
But I'm glad to hear that the behavior is not tolerated here in the city.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Another question, Chief, if you can address it. Was, was this gang related, this rash of criminal activity we've seen?
I would prefer not to answer that question at this point until we have made arrests on all of the unstalled cases. I don't want to insert motive at this point.
Okay, but we do have a gang unit?
We do have a gang unit, yes. Well, I'm sorry, more than, we have a gang detective within our undercover unit. So we have an undercover unit within that we have a gang detective. I want to be very specific about that.
Chief, I guess just a challenge for your department, your, your kind of closing statement about sort of the, a message going out that New Bern and Craven County is not an area that the criminal, bad actors, you know, that they may need to stay away from this area. Based on what I am hearing from residents in, in Ward 1, there is certainly a heightened sense of insecurity. So I guess the question and, and the challenge that I'm referring to is how can the department address that heightened sense of insecurity that a, a number of residents are feeling?
Best way for me to answer that question is obviously, we want to reduce crime. That's, that's our priority. But we also want to reduce the fear of crime. And when we have incidences such as what we've seen over the past month, that creates that fear of crime. And we have to contextualize that the best we can. We have to be transparent, and we have to be seen and invisible. One of the reasons why we implemented overtime for officers to come in and fill that gap was because we recognized that at this moment in time, that the, the community is in fear and they're, when they see law enforcement patrolling their community, that, that lowers the temperature down. That's the best way that I can answer that question, bringing closure as quickly as possible. And also, when a citizen, and we've seen this within the past week or two, when a citizen says, I'm in fear, we have to have a conversation with that citizen and, and come up with a strategy specific to their needs. And I think that's also important.
Well, and I think that's the direction that I'm going in, that it's an issue of how, how to best communicate to specific neighborhoods or areas of the community where there seems to be this heightened sense of insecurity. And so it's as much a public education piece or component as it is seeing more officers on the street patrolling.
Right. So at the last Board of Alderman meeting, I've committed that we would have a strategy for either a workshop or the ability to provide that public safety awareness and training for citizens. We are meeting next week to, to determine how best to deliver that to our community. So that is forthcoming. I heard this board loud and clear last week, and we will have a strategy moving forward. Anything else? Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Hughes, it looks like we are about 30 some odd minutes over.
I think, I think you're dealing with me on the last three, so, so I think we can work this out. So the first item that I'll be talking about is downtown parking there. Two items we're going to discuss. One, the mayor brought up a recommendation to discuss handicap parking in the downtown section. So as you all know, we've got the parallel parking on the streets, we've got narrow sidewalks. And so I asked George to do some, some investigations, see what we could realistically do. And for a narrow street, there, there is something in the international code that allows us to have parallel parking as long as it's striped, but it has to be on the end of a block. Example, in front of City Hall or at the corner of Christ Church. I think we can get by with some of the crosswalk areas, like on Middle and, and at Pollock as well. We may end up taking up a little bit more than a regular space. There's already curb cuts for the handicap accessibility. We would have to have the sign that had, that states the legal requirements to allow the warrant officers to ticket those violations. In my conversations with George, it looks like it will cost us about $300 per space to properly sign and paint those spaces. This is in the MSD, so if this is something that the board would like us to consider, we will come back with a budget amendment for the MSD to do that. The conversation that I had with the mayor was the possibility of looking at, at least putting a handicap space, one on each block, to see how it goes. And we could look at probably three or four in a strategic area to see how it goes. And if it ends up being popular, then we could add some, some more. But once we put them in, there's, there's no going back on that.
I thought if a person had a handicap placard according to the parking plan, they could park anywhere they wanted to.
Oh, they can. They can. There is no designated on-street parking. And so that's, that's the issue. When you come downtown, a lot of times parking is taken up. And so that's the issue.
Okay.
So having designated handicap parking.
Well, I think we certainly need to have handicap parking in downtown district for sure. I mean, Rick.
I'd have no problem with pursuing that at all.
So what you need to do, put a budget amendment or something to get in front of us?
Yes.
Anybody opposed to that?
I don't know.
One, one per block as a start, I think is reasonable.
So you're saying to have a handicap parking space, one on each block downtown? But if you have a handicap sticker, you can park in any parking space anyway?
Sure.
So what's the need of designating a parking space, a handicap parking space?
This is an example. So we've got a $4 million handicap ADA accessible elevator that's being added to this building. And if somebody that is in a wheelchair wants to come to a board meeting, there's no on-street parking that's available for them.
But they can park in any parking space.
It could be full. All the on-street parking could be full, and there's nowhere for them to park.
So that would give someone a designated parking space that would be open for somebody that's handicapped.
There's a difference between the license tag and just having the placard hanging in your car. I guess with the tag, you can park.
Yeah, well, you can.
It's different.
Yeah, I think they're the same. One's a permanent disability. I think the other one's kind of a, a annual thing or temporary thing or something.
But it gives you access when you have the parking spaces.
I think the issue comes up, and I, I heard this, anyone can park in any parking spot downtown, anyone. If you make a handicap spot, only the handicap can park there. So if I come downtown and I see an opening and I see, oh, it's handicap, I can't park there. That reserves it for somebody who is handicapped. I think that, that makes the difference.
We already, we only have one. Is that correct, on Middle Street, in front of the church?
I think it's only on Sunday, too.
Really? Okay.
I mean, I don't have a problem putting it around City Hall because that's access to government. I think it ought to be a conversation with this off-street parking rather than automatically designating on-street parking for handicap. That maybe some of this off-street parking ought to be handicap. So before we jump to a decision, I'd, I'd like to have that discussion. I'm not saying we don't need handicap parking. My discussion point is where it is.
Mr. Mayor, you want to bring, bring some options back to us with a call so we can deliberate and decide at that time?
Yes, sir, we sure will. Which takes us into off-street parking. So just to give you an idea, we have three off-street parking lots that, that we lease spaces out to, to private individuals. The first one is the Pollock Lot, which is across the street from us. To give you an idea, that has 37 spots in it. The Craven Lot is right beside Morgan's Restaurant. That has 41 spaces. And then the Hancock Lot, which is basically behind the Chelsea, that has 49 parking spaces. Occupancy for those spaces, the Pollock Lot over the past three years, we've seen 100% occupancy. On the Craven Lot, 100% occupancy. On the Hancock Lot, on average, well, this year it's 74%. At the best, it's been about 93% occupied. How much money do we generate on an annual basis on all three of those lots? About $25,000. $25,000 this year for those spaces. And so what do we charge? So it, we have two different tiers for this. So if you want to park there from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., that's $20 a month, okay? Or $240 a year. If you want it for 24 hours, which a lot of residents will, will pay for that, that's $30 a month or $360 a year. So that's how we arrive at, at that amount. The Pollock Street Lot itself generated this year $7,000 in rental fees. The Craven Lot, $10,200, and the Hancock Lot, $9,100, okay? So we've had some discussions about the possibility of adding an off-street parking kiosk. When I was at the ICMA meeting, I saw one of the kiosks and was able to talk to representatives there. And we're seeing this trend all over, but you haven't seen it here in New Bern yet. This would allow an opportunity to put a kiosk in at least one of the lots and do a test, have it open for parking, where you could limit that parking to one hour, determine whatever fee we wanted to. It could be half a day, it could be full day, it could be 24 hours. Whatever that fee is, basically someone would go up to the kiosk, they could pay with their credit card, they could pay with cash as well if they wanted to. If someone stays in that parking space after hours, the, the systems we've seen out there are compatible with the parking control software that they use to ticket, where they could look at the machine, it could give them a readout on who is expired, and officers can issue a ticket for that. Now I'll give you another update. Parking ticket revenues, okay? So so far this year, $29,472 in parking tickets. In 2021, $22,000 in parking tickets. And in 2020, $21,000 in parking tickets. So we're actually making more on parking tickets than we are on leased parking. If we went with the kiosk, basically $6,000 to $8,000 is what it costs for the unit, and then approximately $1,200 to $1,500 a year for, for the ongoing service, the accessibility and things like that for, for that system to talk back to the parent company, whoever, whoever the monitoring group is for this. It's definitely something to look at and see if we could generate additional revenue. Any revenues that, that are received go back into the MSD. If this is funded, the MSD would have to pay for this. So happy to talk about this, get your thoughts, see what you'd like to do. Regardless, the, the price for the downtown parking is, is very, is very low. And so at a minimum, we definitely need to look at increasing that. What thoughts do you have?
Did you, did you have just an estimated cost per cut, what it would cost a customer? I mean, I didn't know if you had looked into that or whatever.
Haven't looked into what, what area cities have done. And I could, I could, there are case studies that they've done that I didn't look at to see what they're doing in North Carolina, comparable cities to ours. But, you know, you'll see a lot of places where people park for a dollar or $2 for an hour, and then it just goes up from there.
Right.
So we would, for a trial basis, to see how the kiosk would work, would suspend the leased parking wherever parking lot we choose and go with this for a trial?
That's correct.
And it requires only one machine?
That, that's correct. So you need, if, if we did this eventually in three locations, it would be one machine per location for accessibility. So you park into a lot, you can just walk up to the machine, fill out your information, and, and pay, and go from there. Or you can also use your smartphone if you wanted to. Once you pull in, you do it from your smartphone.
Ward, I'll just share with you, I was on the parking committee, which was five or six years ago. And that parking committee was made up of downtown residents, downtown businesses, and other interested parties. And I think everybody agreed, except for the ones that were renting a space, agreed that the price was too low. And I think everybody agreed, except for the ones that were renting a space, agreed that the price was too low. And we had made some recommendations to increase it. And what, what my goal as being a member of that group was, was to always provide flexibility and options for people that want to come downtown. So right now, when somebody comes downtown, they can park on the street for two hours within that block. Then they have to move their car to another block, not just up a space or two. Or they can go to one of our outer line red, yellow, and black bear?
Red, gold, and black.
Okay. They are free, all-day parking, you can park there all day long, but you have to walk just a little bit further. Then we have these, what I would consider a premium parking lot, which is the one right across the street and the one by Morgan's, which is pretty much all leased. Morgan's leases a lot of them, so their customers have the ability to use it. But the thought that we had at the time was to take one of those lots, probably the one right across from City Hall, and put this kiosk there and do a measurement of it. I, I will guarantee you that the revenues will be higher. There's no question about that. But what that does, that gives somebody visiting downtown an option. If you want to park all day long or for longer than two hours, you have the ability to do it, but you're going to pay for it. It's your choice. If you don't want to pay for it, then you can park on the street for two hours and move your car, or you can go to one of the outer line lots. But by us leasing these parking spaces for this minimum cost, it takes a premium parking lot basically out of the inventory other than those that are leasing lot. So this opens it up. And obviously those folks are going to have to find somewhere to go and find something to do. But, you know, we could be courteous and give them a, a timeframe. And I, I wouldn't advocate us starting this December one. Uh, but I think the leases come up January one, so we would need to look at adjusting that if we decide to go in this direction.
That's right. The leases, the leases expire December thirty-first and, and they are on an annual basis. Also, if, if a kiosk like this was used, I think several of you may have had some issues today on where am I going to park? Do I need to get a, a parking pass or anything like this? Uh, these systems have the ability to where we can issue passes or codes. If you've got a meeting, we can send that to you and all you do is enter that in there and, and you're covered. So it, they've, they've pretty much figured it out how to, with the technology, how to do these things pretty neat. So I, i- if you'd like to give me a direction, one way or the other, just, just, just let us know. We're, we're happy to do whatever the board would like.
Another question, parking after five where there was no issue, let's say across the street. So with the kiosk after five, six, seven?
It'd still be an hourly rate according to the city of Wilmington.
So there's no?
There's this twenty-four hours, seven days a week.
But that's us. That's, that's correct. That's correct. And, and any, any weekend in downtown New Braun, parking is always at, at a premium. Especially in the evenings because there's so many activities that are going on in the downtown area.
Foster, can you provide, um, just a little background information? Not, not today, but just to further this discussion. For each of the three lots that you identified, um, can you identify who, not by name, but who is leasing spaces in those lots? So is it, is it a local business, is it a resident?
Absolutely.
You know, just, just to see how that mix is coming into play on each of the lots.
We sure can.
And that may help us decide which lot makes the most sense to use as a test case.
Yes, we can do that.
And would you, excuse me, and would you include those stats that you gave us as far as dollars?
We sure will.
For each lot, please?
And to Alderman Royal's point, if we decided to enforce this after hours on the weekend, you have to pay for enforcement. So we have to have, right now, we only enforce it, is it eight to five?
It's eight, it's eight to four PM.
Eight to four. So you, we would have to, there would have to be somebody here to enforce it, or it would be the honor system.
Okay. We'll provide that information. Look forward to hearing back, I mean. Any, any other comments on downtown parking? All right. Next item is, uh, review of proposed memorial marking policy. This is more to help, help staff, give staff direction on something like this. We have, we have several things in, in the city with, I, I'd really like to get some direction because previously we've had issues where department heads have, have been able to approve certain things, whether it be a bear placed in, in a park or, or a historical mark place in a park or, um, or something like that. And we just, I just want to make sure that everyone's on the same page. There's no, there's no, um, um, no cross signals or anything. We, staff knows exactly what they can and can't do. And so I just want to give some examples of this. With the policy, um, for example, the New Braun Bears, a recommendation would be anyone that wanted to place a New Braun Bear on, on city property, manager would have the, the authority to approve or deny that. That is what has been the case today. There are some exceptions. We don't put them on sidewalks and things like that, especially where, where, where it breaks it down to where sidewalk is not accce- accessible. Uh, construction and dedication plaques that may placed on, be placed on City Hall, the elevator, the manager would coordinate that like, like they always have. Use of public spaces, so for monuments, memorials, and markers, um, and plaques. Cemetery markers, that, that's something that is already headed to parks and recreation. There are certain guidelines that are already spelled out in the ordinance on what can and can't occur there. But a- as you all know, we had an issue with a marker that was placed at, um, Union Point Park this past year. There were cons- some concerns with that, so that, that was taken out. But we do have historical markers, um, Civil War markers that are in. One is in, uh, Union Point Park, the other is at Glenn Burney Park, uh, uh, signifying that was a Civil War camp, uh, at one time. We've got, uh, some pieces that are located at Lawson Creek Park that, that kind of give a, an indication of how the shipyard worked. And I think that was pulled over from somewhere on Lawson Creek and, and rebuilt over there. We've got the African-American Historical Tour signs that were put out throughout the city about a little more than a year ago. No approval was even gotten from that Development Services basically had a lead in that. And so what we'd like to do is with any historical markers, um, that would go into a, a public space, we'd like the board to review that and either approve or deny that. If, if you don't want to address this policy, if we get these requests, we're still going to bring it to the board. But this is just something that kind of sets things out, sets criteria up. So staff can vet these things properly and get it to you for your review and approval. When we're talking about a historic, historical marker going in a public place, there's certain criteria we look at, such as timeliness of, of the, whatever's going to be, um, memorialized, community significance, past honors, maintenance planning, size of the marker, is it, is it too big, is it suitable, is it appropriate for where the space is going to be? The financial responsibility, who's going to take care of it, maintain it moving forward? Ownership, would it stay the property of the city or would it, or it be the property of a nonprofit or whoever brought this information to us? And then it basically spells out that, the review and application process. So for anything we'd have, they'd have to got an application with the appropriate department, it would go through its vetting. And then ultimately, if it required board approval, the board would review this and make a determination whether this is suitable or not to be placed in public property. So I'd love to, I'd love to have your comments, uh, and direction on how you would like to proceed with something like this.
Foster, I got a couple of questions for you. I've, I've read your policy. My concern is the, the park that the Fireman's Museum maintains. I mean, how would that affect the, that particular park? Because they raised a tremendous amount of money to have those monuments put up out there. Even the sign out front, money was raised. I mean, is that all going to be handled now through Parks and Recreation?
No, that wouldn't, not all necessarily handled through Parks and Recreation. The Fire Department is basically the destiny for dealing with the Fireman's Museum. So basically it would, it would run through the Fire Department.
Okay. So they're pretty much exempt from this policy?
Not necessarily exempt, but if what they've got out there, you know, the board never voted on any of that stuff that is on city property. But if they wanted to do something else, they, they just go through the process. Bobby, Chief at, Chief now or Chief at the time would, would vet through it and he'd bring it to the board for, for review and approval. So it, that's how it would work.
Okay. And then I, I see where the naming of streets, facilities, public spaces should be all approved by Board Alderman. But I don't see anything in here that mentions rooms. And I, an example is we had people to pay a tremendous amount of money to have their name put on a room at the Fireman's Museum. The same for the Trine Palace. So I, I think that's, that type policy should continue on. I mean, we had people that paid ten thousand dollars to name a, a fifteen-by-fifteen room. You know, and then that money was used to design that room and build that room and put the, uh, the artifacts in that room. And the same thing, like I said, took place at the palace. So we needed to determine how we're going to do rooms.
So, I mean, one thing, just like you said, this does address streets, facilities, and public spaces. And it, to be honest with you, because we know we're, we may have this coming up with the Stanley Lake Recreation Center. We could have this coming up with the Pleasant Hill Community Center and some other buildings that we may acquire over time. And so we may need to look at a separate standalone policy which just addresses that. Because if the board would, we need to approve it. And then we need to determine, do you want to put a dollar amount towards, toward the, the naming of a, the door or a room and things like that?
And how long that would be good for? I mean, how, naming rights?
Sure.
Basically like an amphitheater. Which is one of the things I'm going to bring up shortly. And then my third was, I think that you've already discussed this, but should we put a, for plaques like down at Union Point Park? Should there be a maximum size or are you going to?
There, yes, there would have to be a maximum, a minimum size. I think it's going to depend on, on what is presented. Uh, for example, you've got a nice historical marker down there now, um, right where the, where the, um, bird feeding area is. And maybe not necessarily that size for, for certain things. It's really going to depend on what, what is presented.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'd be quite interested in seeing a policy for rooms, naming of rooms. I don't know how everybody else feels about it. Are you timeless?
Foster, I feel a little different about putting plaques in a park. You know, because you're opening yourself up for a lot of different things that probably won't go over real well with, with the public. Because the way that life is today, everything goes, okay? And that can open up a can of worms that you will say, wow, why did I do that? You know, that's something that I think that we don't need to go in that direction. Because, I mean, if you look at commercials on TV, you know, and the way that things are done today, it is entirely different to me. I'm not as young as you guys are or older than you guys, but some things just don't set right. And, um, it can come back to really bite you real bad that you wish that you wasn't born. So I, I just, I, I can't agree to that, putting a plaque in a park, because you don't know what's coming at you. You have no idea what's coming at you.
So, so that's exactly why we're wanting to have something like a policy in place for guidance. Regardless, the board would, would give direction, yes, you want that or no, you don't. Or you could say, we don't want any type of plaques and markers in any parks and we could create a, a policy for that. But then you have to realize, we've already got a brick paper program that's at Union Point Park. And that, that will continue as, as that park expands. We have it at other, other parks as well.
But that's something different though, you know?
Well, that, and that, that right there is why we need a policy to differentiate things like that, so we're, so we're clear. But happy to do whatever the board would like, like.
But that's just me.
Sure.
Well, may, you finished?
Yes, correct.
Uh, Mr. Hughes, um, I somewhat agree with Alderman, um, Kenzie. I think it, I don't have a problem with the monuments, the plaques and the markers being in the parks. But maybe we need to specify or a, a particular part that we will allow such markers and stuff. Because I look at Union Point Park, that's a small park. I mean, you're taking away, you know, the space for, from family. I'm looking at it like this, if people want free advertisement, that's what it is, is free advertisement. And I, and if, if we're going to go with this, with, with this policy, I think we need to designate, just like with, um, Lawson Creek Park, that's a big park. So I, I just, I, I, like you mentioned, we had a problem with this before by a marker that was put down there. And I don't want that issue to surface again. And, you know, I, I just, when you say vetting to me, who's going to take that responsibility to vet? I'll just say, I'll use my grandpappy as an example. I wanted to put a statue of, a plaque or something down there in the park for him. Who's going to go in and vet to see exactly where, where this man stood in society? What this man did in society? Was he racist? Did he create any, any problems? You know, who's going to vet all that and take the time to do that when we're presented with, with a, a application of someone wanting to put, whomever, whatever, whatever person in the park?
Yeah, and, and now one thing, if you, if you start looking at individuals, yeah, that makes it a little bit difficult. Because, yeah, we have to have some criteria in place where you're going to do literally background search to.
Exactly.
To see if that board would admit it. If you're looking at historical event or something that happened at a certain point in time in our, in our history, um, you know, we could add additional criteria.
Okay. Yeah, you would.
Absolutely. And of course, if, if, if you want to adopt this policy with, with whatever caveats are put into it, staff would have specific criteria that they would look at, they'd bring it to me. If, and pretty much literally, we would share it with all the board before it's on the agenda to see if there are any concerns or issues that you would have before it would come up.
Foster, do other municipalities that have parks have a program where they, anybody can put a, a monument or something down in one of the parks?
So we, this, this policy was mirrored off of several cities that have policies in place. That, that's why we, we copied this and made some changes. In, in terms of any city that just lets anyone put anything in any park, I'm not aware of anyone doing anything like that.
I would say kind of to Alderman Kenzie's point, you know, when you talk about getting into some of the details of this, community significance, you know, I think an event needs to be well past a year or a person well past a year posthumously. You know, it should be more like five to ten years so that you're not having a reaction to some of this. And then, you know, speaking of Union Point Park, I mean, we can always as a board set aside a park that, you know, even though we give, say Parks and Rec or the city manager the authority to put something in the park, we can say, hey, not Union Point, you got to come to us. So maybe we can always carve that out as a caveat, so.
And you have addressed my concern. Again, we, I, I believe it was expressed here, we don't want to find ourselves erecting anything that we need to take down. And so of course, the background, you said, um, vetting, all of that would absolutely be necessary. We don't want to see our city, um, having to, uh, encounter what other cities have with their monuments. And, and again, my admiration or honor for a person might not be what is necessary for our city. So yes, as long as we can vet it, as long as we can evaluate, as long as we can bring it before the board and, uh, have those final decisions, I think that'll work well.
And, and Union Point Park, and I do hear you loud and clear on that, I mean, that, that does not need to be. And that, that does not be the, the catch-all for, for all plaques and monuments. I mean, for years and years, Parks and Recreation had, has had an Honor Tree Program. So if you go down there, some of the established trees, you'll see some, some markings down there in, in memory or honor of, of whoever. And that, that, I don't know when that started, it was way before my time being here. Then you see one historical marker and you see some bears at the front. And really, to be quite honest with you, it's only appropriate for literally a few more things that could go in there. And there's several other parks that could, and public spaces where, where, where markers can be placed, if that's what the board wanted to look at doing.
Well, we may want to save those few things that we have left down there for what the city wants to put in there. It might be someone that we need to. It might be someone that we need to recognize.
Sure. And with the policy, the board would have the ability to designate that. If, if you wanted to, if you wanted to, um, look at a certain, if, if we had an application came in, you wanted to look at that and designate wherever you wanted it to go?
And I, and I think just for me to express a personal opinion, since I have a pretty high standard for monuments and markers, this policy ought to say no a heck of a lot more than it says yes. Probably ninety percent.
Anyone else?
So what direction are we giving the city manager, if any, or more review needs to be done with this policy?
We currently don't have a policy. Is that what I understand?
Right.
Okay, so we need a policy. The question's gonna be is what does policy look like? You've got a draft, I guess this is a draft in front of us.
This is a draft.
Um, maybe what I would recommend is for each of us to take this back with us, make some notes, send those to the city manager, let him compile everybody's feedback and adjust the policy, the recommended policy, bring it back before. What do you think? And if there's conflicting issues, then you put in here, I had three Aldermen say they wanted this, I had three say they wanted this, so y'all need to decide what you wanna do.
Well, you're getting ready to have another request. So it's
What was that?
You're going to, you're getting ready to have a request?
Well, we had, and, and just to be, we, I know we've got at least three requests. There's one group that would like to have a bear, there's one group that would like to have a, uh, a hi- a historical marker in, in honor of one of our founding fathers. Um, and, and then we, we've done another marker, the, the, uh, marker that was previously implemented, so.
Guinness Book of World Records.
So we know that, we know that there are three requests. Do you wanna give us some data?
If we get, if we get information back to you, how long would you need to bring back a draft policy to us?
Just a few days.
So if we got it to you by the end of November, you could have, we could go ahead and put a placeholder on for the December agenda?
We could.
What does the board think?
But before we, if, before we make a agree, a vote, whatever on this, um, how, how, we're, we're talking about public space, our taxpayer and citizen space. And do we feel that we need to involve the public with this? We're talking about city space? Public space? Is there something that we need to involve the public with?
I, I, I get that argument, but everything that's been put out there right now has never had that. So I mean, if we wanna change that and say, yeah, we wanna have a public hearing on this, we certainly can.
I think that we should, me personally, I think we should because, you know, I don't want I don't, as long as this is vetted properly, fine, but I don't want this to come back as to us as, you know, we're dealing with all ethnic groups here in the city. And, you know, you might have s- some reminders of past experience that a person that we choose, a marker we put out there that my ethnic group might not have a problem with, but yours may, or vice versa. So I'm looking at it from, you know, what type of racism may be involved. And, and we have this all the time, we all are aware of this. Uh, so I, I just feel that we need to get the public's opinion on this because it is their parks.
Or you could just have a policy, says, policy says no.
Just
It only requires Board of Aldermen approval.
But then there again, you're saying the Board of Aldermen's approval, but you got to look deeper and dive deeper into this, you know, we don't want to kind, we don't have, want to have any en- encounters with any type of dehumanization. People gonna look at it like that.
And that, our, our, that's why we wanna have some guidelines in place.
Yes.
Because regardless, someone comes to me and says, we want this, and I say no, well, most likely they're gonna request that to be put on again. If they don't hear from the city manager.
My, my vote, my vote would be a not do anything.
I agree with that.
No plaques, no, no, no statues.
Unless the city initiated it, you know?
I agree with you.
Does that save you on a policy? Save you on drafting a policy?
I agree with you.
If, if the board is giving me a direction to
But we still got other issues, other than memorials and plaque stuff. I mean, again, we're back to naming buildings. Is it gonna be a no? Which has always been, in the past, the city's stance on naming buildings. I remember when we built the fire, headquarters fire station out there, there was a big push to name that building after a local person. And the board said, no, we're not gonna get into naming buildings. Uh, um, and from the public's, I, I, you know, again, if the city wants to honor somebody, you know, that's a different story, but um, naming buildings and naming rooms can open up a big can of worms. Uh, I, I don't know, if you're gonna name a room, and we'll just use the Stanley White Center because that's gonna be the biggest building we got coming up, if you're gonna name a room, you should pay to have your name put on that room, just like we did over at the Farmers Museum. Or just like they did over at the Trium Palace. And I don't know where else in the city. I, did the hospital do anything like that? You know? I said, oh, yeah, they, yeah, they sold rooms. They had named like some rooms, so. You know, I didn't, this, unless it's the board initiates it and they want to honor something, a, a worker or something like that and do something, a plaque or whatever, then
So is the agreement, no?
Correct, it's just consensus of the people. I, I think that's the easiest approach to take.
All right.
If you try, if you try to establish a policy, there's always going to be an exception that will find its way into it and that's gonna cause some issues at that time. Uh, the easiest approach that's not harmful to anybody is just to say no when, when you're dealing with public property.
Absolutely.
If somebody wants to put a, a marker or monument on private property, we have no saying that.
None.
So I, I, I like this, I like simple, I like easy, but I wanna make it complicated for a minute. So Swiss Bear donated the ship hauling machine to the city of New Bern to put at Lawson's Creek Park. Where would that have fallen on this, this, this current no policy or what your proposed policy would be? It would be a no?
It would be in a, the historical marker that's currently down, the state historical marker that's currently down at Union Point Park would be in a the one at, um, I can't remember, maybe it was Camp, Camp Babbitt.
So how about, how about the sign that we just put up here that, um, Al Barfield was here about the city and would that be a no?
Is it on city property?
It's on the right of way, it's on the sidewalk.
It would be in a, an African-American historical trail would be in a
And then what do you do?
I just bring that up because
Like, like at Fort Titan Park, you've got a, a area that used to be fenced, had, was fenced off, had a tree there in honor of Roger Hatton.
Uh, uh, anyone else that wanted to do that, that would be a no.
So we're saying going forward. It would be a no.
That's correct.
That is correct.
Everything else is grandfathered in.
That's correct.
But that doesn't mitigate them from coming to the board for an exception.
That is correct.
So that's your policy. Then I don't have a problem with it.
Our policy is no. If you want an exception, you have to petition the board.
So do we need to put that on the agenda to have a formal vote taken to establish this policy?
That's directions to the manager.
Well, you, you can give me a direction and we'll probably look at putting, we'll probably end up updating the ordinance or something to, just to, so it's somewhere, yes. We'll, we'll, we'll come back to something on that. All right. Okay. All right. Is everyone ready for the for the last item on the
Yes, sir.
I'm ready to hear from Sonya. I don't know about the last item.
Sonya, I'm gonna be talking about this, Sonya is going to be
Sonya is in the house.
You might as well come on, sit up here in front of this, but I'm already going through this. We, we just spent quite a bit of time. I give Sonya and Sharon, the rest of the staff that at, um, HR and Kim Ostrom, Marvin and myself, we've been working quite a bit on, on this and
Marvin?
Even Marvin, that's right, you believe that? So in February of twenty twenty-two, the city engaged a Piedmont Triad Regional Council of Governments to perform a salary study. Um, they most recently did a study for us back in twenty seventeen. On average, the, the Piedmont Triad COG does about seventy studies a year. The study started in February, uh, we got a lot of information back mid to late summer, and by the time we got that information back, what we had seen is several counties and cities around us had already made additional upgrades, and so what we had received was already outdated. So we had to get the consultant to go back out and get more, uh, comparisons for us. And so the study compared our pay scale, our compensation plan to other benchmark cities. And so the benchmark cities are Clayton, Craven County, Goldsboro, Greenville, Greenville Utilities Commission, Havelock, Jacksonville, Kinston, Morehead City, Pitt County, Rocky Mount, Statesville, Lake Forest, Washington, Wilmington and Wilson. So as I said, the last study was in twenty seventeen and with this study, our position classifications are on average ten percent below the market average, which means when you look at our compensation plan and you compare it to these other cities, on average, we're ten percent lower just on the, the minimum maximum scale, which equates to those positions. So there are some outlier positions and those outliers are positions that are more out of whack than that, than average ten percent. Those positions include sworn police officers, some electric utility positions and building inspectors among a few others. So we know that we've got to do something for those. To get us back in alignment and back in the market, it, it is not gonna be cheap, it's gonna be expensive. On average, we're looking at approximately three million dolla, three point six million dollars over the course of the year. We know that that is a lot, a lot. And so we've come up with some options and we definitely wanna hear your thoughts on this. So if we implemented the full plan and that was implemented as of January first through the end of this budget year, breaking it down by the funds, the general fund and the enterprise fund, um, full implementation for the next six months would be one point two million dollars. General fund, five hundred and eighty-four thousand for the enterprise fund. That includes benefits as well, so total of one point seven million dollars over the next six months. Over the course of a, a year, the following year, that would be approximately three point six million. We could also look at an incremental increase. And so we looked at doing five percent or seven and a half percent. So if we did an incremental increase, the first six months, it would overall be about eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. For the course of a year, it would be just under one point seven million dollars. With a seven and a half percent increase, that would be with both funds combined for six months, one point two million dollars for the course of a year, just under two point five million dollars. Even if we did the five percent, the seven and a half percent, we're still behind in the market. So that, we're always gonna be playing catch-up. Uh, but the thing we've gotta think about is we've gotta start doing something. When we see our, our comparable cities that are paying their sworn officers several thousand dollars more than we are, and we see other positions that are, that are as low as we are, we've got to respond. And that, that's one of the issues that we have had, among others, with, with recruiting, uh, and keeping certain staff. Sonya and I were talking the other day, you know, when, when Chick-fil-A is paying fifteen dollars an hour, as the mayor pointed that to me yesterday, they have a three-day fourteen-hour work week, they're being able to do a lot of flex time, they're having to do whatever they have to do to, to get staff. And, um, you know, on average, our employees, our, our starting employee makes right at twenty-nine thousand, twenty-nine to thirty thousand a year for full-time. The average salaries, when you look at all four hundred and sixty employees, you can put that average together, our, the average pay is right at fifty thousand dollars for all of our employees. So I know this is a lot, uh, if, if the board wanted to, to look at doing any portion of this, uh, for the remainder of this budget year, it would come from general fund and enterprise fund, fund balances to, to, uh, fund this. Then moving forward, this is something that would be absorbed and as part of the budget process. Now, we know we've got the property tax revaluation coming up. I've had some conversations with county manager. We're we're gonna know specifically after January thirty-first exactly where that's gonna be in terms of revenues. We've looked at our state sales taxes, our state sales taxes have still continued to be strong, uh, and the projections are still strong according to my conversations and her research with Kim. But we're gonna have to do something and, and moving forward to future budgets, you know, we talked about fire department needing things. All the departments need things and maybe it's gonna be that we have to tighten the belt a little bit more and look at, look at individual budgets and do some cutting, and we may have to cut some capital things. But that human labor, uh, you know, if we don't have our staff, we can't, we can't operate those, that equipment. We can't house those facilities that, that, uh, for those primary services. So it's, it's a tough situation and we're no different situation than anyone else. And, and I think whatever this board decides to do or not do, other cities and counties are looking at us and they're gonna turn around and probably try to follow suit because that's what it's been, it's been a leapfrog for all of us over the last several years. Um, as you full well know, uh, this current budget, we did a five percent cost of living increase and up to two percent merit increase. Um, as soon as we did that, others were doing even more than what we recommended. So it's, it, it's tough. Now, we do not know what the economy is gonna be like moving forward next year. I'm sure that the election will have, uh, will open our eyes and have a little bit to do with that, but that's unknown, so we're, we're gonna continue to take our budget processes we normally do, um, and go from there. So I, I'd love to hear your thoughts and comments. And we're here about
How many employees does this actually affect? How many, a number of employees were found to be underpaid according to our benchmark cities?
Four hundred and sixty employees.
How many employees do we have?
Four hundred and sixty. All, all of our employees.
Every one of them were being underpaid?
That's correct.
No? I'll tell you something right there, we've gotta do something. We can't continue losing police officers to go for higher salaries thirty miles down the road. Can't, and, um, you know, every, everybody else, linemen especially. How many linemen have we lost in the past few years to say they can get up to the drive to Newport and get a whole lot more money?
Well, and I'll give you a great example. I mean, we were at the process, we were, we were really at the tipping point with linemen and, and Charlie and I were talking about this, we had to do an increase uh, middle of the year to keep them. And that, that's just what we have to do. I mean, we, those key positions, we have got to have.
Um, Foster?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you, um, explain to me, um, I know you said you have the five, now, when you're, you, we're looking at the five percent increase, now that's just strictly, um, merit increase rate?
No.
Not including COLA?
The five percent on this?
Uh-huh.
That would be COLA.
Okay.
That means that everyone would get that. And that also means that on our compensation plan, that that minimum would go up five percent as well. So that we, so that we don't continue to be behind the market.
Gotcha.
Doesn't mean that we would, it doesn't mean that we would be caught up with where we need to be, but at least we're trying to play catch-up.
Are we out of whack more so in the upper management salary range than we are in the, the lower manage, the lower salary ranges?
I'm gonna let, uh, Sonya answer that.
No, it's, it's not just, uh, those positions like Foster identified, sworn police officers, some of the, uh, public utilities positions, the building inspectors were identified, so, and then a few others, but no, not specifically upper level positions, not specifically. But one thing I do wanna add to that, we talked about the five percent across the board. If you move that pay plan up by five percent, you're still going to have some employees who are below the minimum of the range, so.
Yes, and we don't need that.
And with that being said, in, in Kim's calculations, what you see on this, that takes into account those that are outliers and puts them where they need to be.
And, and Sonya, what is the range? What's the lowest? Five percent and the, the top of the scale is, is ten percent or so? As far as them being out of, out of whack, I reckon, I don't know, out of, off the scale?
Not, not real sure. So, so basically what we're looking at is the way our pay plan is structured right now, our minimums, midpoints and maxes are on the average ten percent below what the market says they need to be. So there are some positions that were identified that is recommended that they move up by one grade, which equates to a five percent increase, if you will. There were some that were There were some that were recommended to move up by two grades, some by, that would be 10%. Some by three grades, which is 15%. So again, we've still got some scrubbing to do of that spreadsheet just to look, not specifically only at the recommendations of the consultant, but we also want to look at, hey, let's look internally and see, you know, where these positions need to be. So there might be some additional discussions.
And how's that going, how's that going to affect compression?
Those are things that we need to look at as well. So just depending upon where you move everyone, if everyone gets the same, you know, it may create some compression issues. And we'll have to look specifically and drill down and look and see what that looks like. And then if the manager wanted to set some criteria to say, okay, we'll use a five-year benchmark. You know, if you've been in your position for five years, we want to create disparity. We may have to give you a little bit more. So there's still work that needs to be done.
And, and, and ultimately, we've been dealing with compression issue in various departments.
No, it's always.
Literally for the past year, as soon as, as soon as, really as soon as we have a hire, we see that that affects the whole apple carton of certain positions. We have to make those adjustments.
Yeah, this has always been an issue.
Yeah, we addressed it before, but as soon as you address it, and then you have to take some, sometimes a little more drastic measures than not in hiring folks, then that creates a few issues.
So I reckon to better understand this, and I'm just going to call some job positions out there that comes to my mind, a fire specialist, one. According to this, your survey, he is, he might be 5% below the recommended salary this, the rest of the cities have. But, and then you have a, a police officer, master police officer, 10, or whatever they are, one of the highest, he could actually be 10% or 8%. So you would adjust accordingly, Rock, is that correct? I mean, not everybody's going to get a 5% across the board raise. Some firemen might get a 5%, a policeman might get 10%, a parking recreation person might get 15% to bring them up to at least the minimum of the new pay scale, correct?
Correct. I mean, certain position classes, like we were saying, we're calling them outliers because we're, we're really lagging behind where the market says we should be. So we would have to identify those particular positions. And some may end up being plucked down, and they may end up needing more of a percentage than other positions.
So without knowing all that, how did we come up with the $3.6 million for full implementation?
We, we looked at the spreadsheet. So we do have a spreadsheet with recommendations. But again, it's, I wouldn't call it preliminary because we still need to go back and scrub that and analyze it. But this is just kind of a preliminary figure, if that's a good word for me to use, as to what the, what the cost would be. But we do have recommendations as far as which job classes should move from one grade to another and which should move two grades, some may need to move three grades.
So the $1.7 million will give us full implementation through July 1st. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I'm in favor of full implementation at least through July 1st and then let us look at it in the budget process to find out where we're going to get the rest of the funding from. We've got our employees as our number one asset. And we can't keep sending them to BLET school and training them, and they come out and take a job over in Greenville making, how much more Greenville, the police officer getting paid in Greenville chief? You know? Uh, whatever. They must be getting paid more because aren't you losing officers over there? I know you had one not too long ago to go to Raleigh. But we've got to, we've got to quit paying staff, training staff. It takes a long time to get a firefighter certified to a level, you know, two or three, whatever they are nowadays, fire, fire specialist. And then he can go to work at Havelock. I think Havelock is paying more than the city of New Bern for, you know, starting firefighters positions now. So my recommendation, I don't care what the other, I don't know what the other boards, but I think we ought to look at full implementation. It's what the consultant says. It's what we can do to keep our employees. How many employees are we short now?
I think we've got about 40.
We right now have about 470 and folks on board, but we have 499 full-time budgeted positions. And it, you know, it just.
Chief, how many are you short?
Seven, but I have four BLET.
That just sworn? That just sworn?
You know, we, and that's budgeted positions, correct? Yeah. And those seven police officers would be a big benefit to the city of New Bern right now. I'm, I'm all in favor of full implementation. And budget time, we'll discuss how the rest of it's going to be paid for. We might have to raise something to pay for it.
So just, just, Ms. Ostrom, can you check my math? Full implementation of $3.6 million for fiscal year would be 10 cents on our tax rate. Is that correct? Because it's about $350, $360 per penny. So we're talking about taking our tax rate, if you had to do that, from 48 cents to 58 cents, based off current day's evaluation?
You're pretty close. Three, I believe it's $330,000 per penny.
I just want to put it.
Yeah, but we're also looking at a reevaluation where the property valuation, according to yesterday's conversation, is not going to change that much. The housing is going to go up quite a bit. The value of the houses in, in, in the Craven County is going to go up quite a bit. So that might be an opportunity there for us to pay for it.
Yeah, and just remember, on this pie, there's only so much of that pie that goes around.
I don't understand.
The pie, there's only so much money that we have at our disposal. Should I take it outside of raising, raising taxes?
Oh, I, I understand that. So what do you recommend that we do to keep our employees here?
I want to do all we can, but I've got to be realistic about, about the cost. And, and the full implementation is tough. And I think our recommendation would be to at least do a 5 or 7.5% incremental increase. Once we know what the financial situation is going to be like as we're going to the budget, come back with, with another increase.
Okay, so are, are the employees going to be privy to this information?
They're watching right now, I guarantee.
I'm talking about if I was a, a level one police officer, and I wanted to know what my salary is currently and what it's recommended by the consultant, are they going to be able to find that information out?
Yeah, that would be, they'll, they'll know because we'll have to come back and get a pay plan approved. So they'll know their position is moved.
So what do we tell them when they say, well, it was recommended that you have a 10% to keep you in line with the rest of the communities, but we're going to only give you 5% because we can't afford it?
I, I think, I'll interject something here. I think a lot of it has to do with quality of life. If I was a police officer, I'd much rather be a police officer in New Bern than I would Kinston, North Carolina. So I mean, that kind of stuff.
I don't know, man, some police officers like the action, you know?
Well, if they do, maybe Kinston's more suited for them. But I, I think we have to be realistic here. And my question for you, Sonya, I know the police department, when we pay for BLET, there's some sort of employment agreement or contractual obligation, and they have to give us a certain amount of time. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. That's, it's three years, yeah. And then there are some caveats built in. If you don't, then this is what you owe us back.
So my, my question is, can that be broadened across all employees for the city? An agreement like that?
That would be a Scott question because we don't want to enter into any kind of contractual obligations with employees as far as employment. I don't, that would be a Scott question. Off the cuff, I would say, don't know if we would want to do that. So there might be other measures that you could take outside of calling it an agreement like that. You know, there are some measures that are taken from other municipalities. They're doing a sign-on bonus, and they are saying, we'll pay you incrementally, you know, a third, a third, a third. So there are things that we could do, perhaps, if you wanted to implement other measures.
And, and like, I'm, I'm looking at a recruitment flyer for Rocky Mount right now. It's a $5,000 sign-on bonus. I was told verbally yesterday that's going to $10,000, but it hasn't been updated here yet. So I can only base it off of what I can see for a police officer. And 11 paid holidays, we have 12, right? I'm not nitpicking, I'm just saying, when we're talking about making decisions like this, we have to make sure that we think this through because an extra vacation day has a value to it. Now, what that value is, you could tell me probably what that is when you break down the salary. But what, what I was going to suggest, I don't know if it's possible or not, but I'd do the 5% incremental increase right now, and I'd do a 5% one-time bonus, and let's see what happens with the market. This can't continue this way. It can't because everybody's going to raise taxes. It's just like a restaurant. If food supplies go up, we're all dealing with inflation. At some point in time, you're not going to pay $12 for a Big Mac. It's going to cap off at eight bucks. And we just have to figure out when that is. We could buy ourselves some time. We could give them a 5% one-time bonus. They'd get it before Christmas. I'm sure a lot of them would enjoy that. That shows that we're working toward this. But for us to, because if you commit right now to do the full implementation, you're not going to take it away. We all know that. So come budget time, we're going to have to find a way, find that 10 cents on our tax rate. That's, that's my thought.
So, so one thing I might add as well, if you, you know, consider doing the 5% across the board, we still, I think, need to take a look at that pay plan. Because if you don't move the pay plan, then you're still, your salaries are still below the market average. So that's going to hurt us from a recruitment perspective. Now, the 5% would of course be, you know, help to retain employees, hopefully. But from a recruitment perspective, we still, I think, need to do something to that.
Well, I would think these, these municipalities is doing these sign-on bonuses, they've got to be getting some sort of legal commitment from an employee. They're not going to give them $5,000, come be a police officer, and in 30 days, you're gone. There's got to be some sort of.
I don't think they give it to them all at one time. I think they give it to.
Yeah, sometimes they may say, okay, you got, we'll give you X when you start, but then when you complete six months, you know, first six months, and then after a year. So yes, but again, I'm, I'm not an attorney, so I would defer to Scott as to what we could do in regards to that. But you're absolutely right. They're not giving it because they walk away.
So Sonya, what is your recommendation for us to do?
My recommendation is for you, for us to do what we can, what we can do that we're comfortable with. And I want us to be able to sustain it going forward because it is a lot of money. And so.
What is your number?
Well, I don't have a number. The numbers, people are over there. So, so I, I guess I'm just saying, you know, there are other things that departments are going to need, you know, capital items and those types of things. And like Foster said, we only have so much, but we definitely need to do something for our employees. They've been waiting patiently for the pay study to be complete. And, you know, we do have difficulty recruiting for some of the positions. So we need to do something with that pay plan to get in line with other municipalities or even put ourselves out there ahead, ahead, ahead of some of the other municipalities to, to be a, you know, a premier employer, you know? So I, I think we need to do something.
So Foster, she pointed her finger at you two. So what is the recommended number that you have in mind?
I, I would be comfortable with either a 5 or 7.5% increase. And in our conversations with Kim, I think we can, we can work that out.
I, I agree with the 7.5% myself.
One, one of the things about, you know, 5% one-time, you know, there's, you have someone that's making $30,000 versus someone that's making $100,000. There's going to be a big difference in there. So if, if you looked at wanting to do a one-time thing, I recommend just doing a flat, a flat amount.
That's what Craven County is doing, to their employees.
Just do a flat amount. That way, it's consistent with everyone. Now, of course, any, anytime you do a one-time bonus, you've still got taxes, retirement, 401K, and things like that that come out.
The thing, the thing that bothers me about this is that you may give somebody a 5% increase in salary, and then when they find out, well, even with the 5% increase in salary, I'm still 7.5% below the state average or the benchmark cities averages. Yeah, that, that, that person's still going to start looking. I mean.
Well, and the one of the, then one of the things on that is, yeah, they can look. And if they go to work for another local government, there's no guarantee that they would, that they would be hired at the same or, or greater amount of money. It really depends on the, the scale where they currently are with that. And I don't think we're losing all that many employees to other municipalities. Yes, of course, police, fire, and department heads, we're, we're doing that. But regular employees, I think we're losing those more to private industry than anything.
We've lost some from public works to the state DOT.
Well, I'm going to be excused for a minute. My, my vote is 7.5%. I shall return.
I think too, one thing, we've, we've talked about the salary study, we've talked about retention recruiting, but there's a much bigger, bigger picture we've got to talk about for police. We've had some conversation about the take-home car. That, that's also on this recruitment flyer, you know, take-home car policy. I think it's within 50 miles of the city border. There's things like that that come into play as a benefit for individuals more so than just throwing money out. That's why I was making a suggestion to do a gradual increase to allow us some time to build a comprehensive and thoughtful plan versus just throwing the money out there that we're going to be obligated for forever.
And, and Mayor, we, we are looking at things like the take-home pay for, for, for certain employees in certain positions. So we're, we're also looking at the possibility of, of a flex time. Does it work or does it not work? And of course, now, we're a municipality. Overall, our hours of operation are 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So if someone's looking for someone over at Utility Building or at City Hall, someone's got to be here. But there are some, some offices that maybe, maybe we can do for four days a week, 10 hours a day. So we're going to bet that. And some departments currently do that. But, you know, we'll look at things like that as well to see what is realistic and what can be done. We, we want to, this, this is a changing workforce. I think you all know that and have seen that. I mean, I remember going to college 30 years ago, and they were telling me that the average work week was going down to 37.5 hours a week. And, and in the last 30 years, I've never worked 37.5 hours a week. But, but folks today that are coming out of college, they've got a different expectation. They're not looking to get a, a nice big house, you know, the tiny home and just enough to, to where they can have fun and do whatever they want to do. You, you don't see that work ethic that you, that, that a lot of folks have grown up with. And that's just the way of the world right now, unfortunately. And, and I will say this, out of our 470 employees, we have some highly dedicated employees who, really overall, they don't complain. They show up to work every day, weekends, nights, they do their job. Do they get some grief from, from the citizens every once in a while? Yes. But also, do they make those citizens' life better when, when they come out and fix those issues? Absolutely. And that happens every single day. And, you know, we try to thank them as much as we can for the service that they do. But it's a thankless job working in local government.
What I, what I heard you both indicating is that these are very preliminary numbers, that you'd have a lot of scrubbing to do, a lot of analysis still to do. So I'm a little uncomfortable making a decision at, today without staff doing a more in-depth analysis of, of what you, of the, what your consultant has provided you to better understand what the actual numbers are going to be or need to be and to look at the different positions that, I mean, you, you identified different categories as being outliers. I'm not sure I fully understand why those were identified when Foster is talking about this is across the board for the entire organization. So if we have classes of staff that are just way out of whack, then we need to be focusing more attention on them and not just do across the board because then you just carry that problem forward for another year or two years or three years. So I think for me, I, I need to see more information before a decision is made. And I want to see your recommendations as to what else is available, if anything, to address this.
Yeah, so what I can tell you is we, we have benefited numbers quite heavily. And these numbers do include benefits as well, 401K, retirement contributions and things. And it does include those outlaw, every outlier position we've got. We, we have more than three or four positions we've, we've talked about. I think the unknown that we don't know is, once, once we look to implement something like this, is there going to be a certain position where we say, oh, oh, yeah, we, we had to make an adjustment. We didn't see this going forward. That's few and far between. Overall, and Kim, and Sonya, you can tell me, is this overall basically an accurate assessment?
I think basically it is, but I don't want anyone to think it is ready to go. So, you know, again, by the time we. So, you know, again, by the time we look at the positions and we go back and we meet with the department heads and we look at internal placement of positions within the pay plan, I don't think it's going to change drastically because we've gone through that and we've looked at it. But we do need to get the stamp from department heads and even addressing those positions that are three grades below where they need to be. We've taken those things into account. I don't think there's going to be a drastic difference, but there could be some. So you mentioned compression, so, you know, we may have to look at that, those types of things. But I don't think it's gonna be to the tune of a million dollars.
And we're not looking for a decision from this board saying, yes, this is what we want to do. But what I am looking for is you give me an idea. Hmm. Give me some more information on this, which we will. Or if you're looking at a certain option or another, we'll definitely get more information to you. And go from there.
Did we fully fund in the budget all police officer positions this year?
Yes, we did.
Yes. So that's one thing for the board to keep in mind. I had an issue with this for many years. Is we would say we would have 90 sworn officers, but we would actually only financially budget for 80 of them. I always questioned that, but there seemed to be a response. But at least now, if we have fully funded it in the budget and we've had the vacancies, we've had the department, then the money's there to do it. It's just, once we get them full, you gotta deal with this next budget year. And it's gonna be the full amount next year.
That's correct.
So what did you want from us as far as direction?
If you can give me any direction on what area you may be looking at that you may be able to support or want some more information on, that's what we'll do. We'll provide some more information.
I mean, I personally have a pal giving a straight 7.5% across the board. I mean, again, you give someone 7.5% or even 5% across the board. And when he pulls his salary survey up and says, well, dang, they ripped me off. I'm supposed to get, I should be up 15%. Then what, I mean, what are you gonna tell him then? I mean, if you go ahead and move them up to where the consultant recommends them to be, we're through with it.
But did the consultants recommend every job? They just did like pay categories, right?
Okay, so they did both. They looked at the classification pay plan and they said, okay, these positions need to be increased by one grade, two grade, three grades. But they also looked at each individual employee. They looked at their salaries. They looked at where they are in the market. And then they made a recommendation as to where should they be in relation to the market. So they made recommendations on both sides.
Is that a public record? Is their salary contribution correct?
That's correct.
I'd like a copy of that. And you can redact the names on it for all I care. But I wanna see the list of every employee and what their salary is and what a consultant recommended it be to bring them up to the minimum.
So that's for 460 people?
I don't know how many because it's a moving target. I don't know if we, that was data as of, I think, September 26th. So it could be a little less than that. Yeah, but somewhere there.
And seriously, you can redact the names. I don't care who's, I just wanna see the position. And I wanna see the variation in a master sergeant one. And if there's three of them in that category, I wanna see what the variation is between all three of them and their tenure. I'm hoping that's on the report, too.
Well, this was done by job description as well, correct?
Yes, we provided them with classification descriptions for each position. We provided them with a spreadsheet to include their salary, to include their time and position, their date of hire. So there's a lot of information we had to provide. But then when we did receive those increases back, I think, June 26th, we had to go back and provide that data because that would impact the analysis. So provided them that.
So let me ask this question. So the recommendation you're giving for full implementation, 5%, 7.5%, that, if approved, would go to COLA, cost of living, right? Not the, so, but you're telling us that we actually have a structural problem in our pay classifications to begin with?
That's correct.
And so the recommendation to fix it is actually being implemented as COLA?
It would be implemented as COLA, but also the classification plan would move up based on whatever that percentage is that you would do. Even though that percentage is not gonna be the full where it needs to be, at least it would still be moving up as well. For example, if one position was, that minimum wasn't 30 and the 5% called for it to be $35,000, it would automatically, that minimum would automatically go to $35,000.
Okay, so the pay classification would go up 5%, but for that employee, when they get their pay stub, it would show 30 plus a 5% in whatever their COLA was. So I guess where I'm getting back to is what you said, is even after we implement any of these, we have to go back and fix our pay scale.
Well, I think what I'm saying is based on the recommendation of the consultant, we can see where they should be relative to the market. What should their salary be? But if you leave that pay scale where it is.
Right.
When, you know, Mr. Jones applies for a police officer position, then our minimum salary is 10% below the market, what the average is. So that's why I'm saying, my opinion is that we're gonna have to increase that pay plan by something. It's gonna happen because if not, we're dealing with the employees that we have on staff and trying to get them where they need to be relative to the market. But from the recruitment perspective, we're still lagging behind.
I'm agreeing with you. So that's what I'm trying to understand. To me, this looks like a two-step process. You know, this full implementation, 7.5%, takes care of our current employees. No?
Well, yeah, we take care of current employees. Not the entire, not on the entire recommendation, but we'd be moving closer to the goal.
Right.
Also would address the new employees that come in.
It moves the scale.
It would be a minimum that would be higher. So really, you're sliding the classification pay plan as well as the salary that those employees are making. Minus the outliers, those would automatically be moving to the appropriate grade on where the plan shows where they should be, at least to the minimum. Correct?
Co-correct.
Sonya, you're telling me that every single employee and every single job fell under the recommendation of the consultant's recommendation?
Every job, yes. So it's been since 2017 that we did this. And as Foster said, all the moving parts and pieces around us, yes. So we did have, I think the majority of the positions were two grades below where they need to be or 10% below what the average is. So there were some that were, you know, 15, some that were five. But when we're talking about the positions as well and the people in the positions, so there's the midpoint. So you wanna try to get your votes to the midpoint within eight to 10 years of employment. So he's looking at everyone. And based on the methodology that they use, it is, okay, this person needs to be here in the market based on the comp ratio or the time and position or whatever method you choose to use. So yes, every position is below. And there is, there are a couple of methodologies that would show that you could justify giving an increase to every single employee. Yes.
Only thing I have to say about this whole salary. We paid for this salary study. We should go along with the recommendations that was given to us by this company. And we have all of our employees, as Sonya said, is 10% below the market value. I think we need to do something to get everyone up to the market value. And then later on, we need to look at our pay scale and increase our pay scale. That's, I'm all for our employees. We gotta do what we gotta do to get them up to the market value, to the average market. And I know we're gonna have to select one of these two options if that's the way we go, but we can't.
Ms. Hayes, I'm gonna have to direct this question to you since I don't believe Foster was here five years ago. And correct me if I'm wrong.
I came in right after this.
Okay, so five years ago, the city had, was it same consultant?
Yes.
Do this? What was the result at that time? What did the board have to wrestle with five years ago?
There wasn't a bunch of wrestling, if I recall. So basically, we were really close. You know, we were, our positions, not all the positions moved. Some of the positions were where they needed to be, some moved by one grade. I don't recall any that were recommended to be moved up by three grades. So it wasn't quite to, it was not anywhere near this extent in 2017.
And then one of the things, the CPI, it had been, it basically did flat. It also had been flat for years, literally 1.2, 1.4% up until 2021. And that's when it went up to, I believe, 7.4%. This year for the year, for 12 months ending September, I think it was like 8.4, 8.7%. So for the last two years, 15%, that's what it's done, the last two years of 38%.
Well, I think one of the things that they did in 17 or the one prior to that was if an employee was at a grade 12, step 5, and his range went up, they moved him to a grade 13, step 4. So his overall range is higher, but he didn't get a raise. Because a step 5 and a grade 12 is about the same thing. Or step 4 and grade 12 is the same thing as the step 5 and vice versa. You got me? But it's, that's how it's like, nevermind.
So basically, that employee stayed where they were in the market.
And salary.
They were okay where they were, but you just moved him to a high grade. They didn't get any.
And that's not gonna happen in, under this, do you don't see that happening in this study?
Well, it just depends on the methodology, I guess, that you wanna use. You know, there's a percent above minimum, there's a time and position, there's a comp ratio. So it just depends on the methodology that you wanna use. And I think we were really focusing and looking at the comp ratio because, Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that equated to that whole 10% below the market. So if you do the full implementation, not everyone is going to, of course, get the same thing. There'll be some 5%, some 10%, some 15%.
So as an option, would it make sense, since we're talking about two different issues, if I understand it correctly? We've got some structural issues with the whole pay scale that needs to be addressed. And then you, and then the other issue is just where each individual is going to fall out with adjustments being made. We're not gonna be able to do this all at once. So should we be taking a little bit of a longer-term approach to this? You know, look at five-year timeframe and make a commitment to making some very serious structural changes over a period of five years or whatever the number is. And yes, they would need to be aggressive every year, but lay it out for a longer term. And, you know, the staff might look at it and say, oh, yeah, but I want it all today. Well, no, you're not gonna get it all today. But over the course of X years, we're gonna get you where you need to be. I don't know if that's a viable option. I mean, I, you know, staff would have to come back and say that, yeah, we could do that or no, it's just not workable.
Well, in my eyes, I guess the con to that would be, as things keep swirling around us and changing around us, then we're always, we're gonna be behind. So I know that it's difficult to bite the bullet. I know this is a lot of money. But I think if we stretch it out and say, okay, let's do this incrementally over a five-year period, then, you know, the other municipalities are being created with the take-home cars and the other things and increasing their salaries. So we're going to, I think in my mind, we may be, continue to be behind if we don't at least, you know, bite most of the elephant now. And I totally get what you're saying. But if we, and we're talking about the structural piece with regard to the pay plan, I really think we're gonna have to move that pay plan up or it's going to create recruitment issues. And then we've given the employees what they deserve, but we're still struggling to recruit because our minimum salary is below what a police officer, I keep using that one, needs to be. So I think, and whatever we do, I would recommend that we move that pay plan up so that we can remain competitive.
Sonya, a question on the scale. So when the chief is hiring an entry-level police officer, he's looking at a scale, what within that range is his purview to make an offer? Does he automatically go to the minimum?
No, not for certain positions. So for the police department, the starting salary depends on the education that that police officer has. So there's a starting salary for high school diploma, associate's degree, bachelor's. But for other departments, it may be, you know, they start them closer to the minimum. It might be within 10% depending upon the difficulties in recruiting. If there are multiple people in that class, if it is a one-class or one-person position in that class, probably a little bit more latitude in regards to how we can negotiate. But, yeah, we've had to do some.
But if, but if the chief had somebody that came in that met the qualifications for entry-level police officer, but they were a retired MP in the military, which gave them some sort of criteria or quality that somebody else didn't have, does he have the ability to pay them more?
Well, I will say, and I mentioned the education, but there's also the component where we give them credit for their years' experience. My point, they get credit, which means money, additional money for their years of law enforcement experience. I don't know if this is particularly military, but for their law enforcement experience. If they've got 10 years with another agency plus an associate's degree, then they get a little higher salary X. So those are the two pieces that we look at when we're bringing in police officers.
Also, the department heads have the authority. They can hire up to 15% above the minimum.
That's what I was.
Anything above that, then it would take my approval.
But for some positions like police officers or where we have multiple people in one class, it's a little hard to deviate from that. We do, but for police, it's just, we're kinda locked into that because you don't want to be bringing someone on here and someone on here. So there is some discretion that they can use.
My final comment is gonna be, obviously, we have a problem. We gotta fix it. It's not always the answer to throw money at it. I understand that the employees probably disagree with me on that. But I deal with employees that disagree with me on that every day. I would personally like to sit down with staff, go ahead and carve out two or three hours. And I wanna go through this in detail. And two other board members are more than welcome to join me in that discussion. And if more than three wanna do it, then you can have a separate meeting. But that's what I really need to see because I want to do what is right and I wanna do what's sustainable. And what I don't wanna do is bite this bullet and say, let's do something. And then we're all sitting up here, budget season, and everybody says, well, I'm not raising taxes. Then what are you gonna do? Are you gonna be letting some people go or are you gonna be cutting some services? And that's not the direction that I wanna go in.
We're happy to set those meetings up.
You weren't looking for a whole lot of direction on this one right now, were you?
No, we knew this was gonna be a big thing. And that's why we wanted to have this, wanted to have everybody here so that we can see what we're dealing with and we just need to have some conversation on that.
Obviously, the message that at least I want our employees to know is, we hear you. We understand there's a problem. We know we gotta do something, but we wanna be smart about it because we don't wanna go out and just do something and then come back to you a little bit later and say, yeah, we're gonna do this, but also we're gonna raise your health insurance deductible by 15 or 20%, which could be an option that we might need to start looking at. Just like I mentioned, the vacation, the holidays, 11 holidays versus 12, there's a value to that. I don't know what it is, but that needs to be part of our discussion when we have that.
And are we trying to make this decision before the end of the year?
That would certainly be my goal. Would be for our December meeting, our December meeting, we would have some sort of action.
I don't want to be the board that keeps kicking things down the road.
Yeah, we can set up small group meetings next week. So we'll reach out on that, keep those scheduled.
So what I missed, what are we gonna do? We all got fixed. Do you have enough individuals for everyone? Do you bring enough emails for everybody?
So does that mean that we're gonna implement the entire policy for the whole staff?
It means.
Is that how you fixed it?
It means we're getting ready to.
I just got an email just a few minutes ago. I'm, it told me that the town of Beaufort, North Carolina pays nine thousand dollars a year more for firefighters in the city of New Haven. Town of Beaufort.
Foster or Sonya, you may have mentioned this and I might have missed it. The, the consultant, do they strictly look at the, the salary or do they also look at the, the benefit side of what municipalities offer?
In, in this particular study, we just asked them to look at salaries.
And I think our benefits are comparable to every other local government, really. And I think we're, we may be a, a little bit above some of the other local governments in the area in terms of our insurance. It was insurance, it was accrued days off and things like that, from basically what we looked at was time off and sick time as well.
Anything else? What we gonna do? We're gonna have small group meetings next week. And we're gonna have it on the agenda for December sixth to take, I, I guess it's December sixth, whatever that date is, first, the first meeting in December to make a decision. It's only gonna be a month different because if we'd have told you today to give everybody fifteen percent, you couldn't do it until probably December one anyway, right? So it's one month probably that we're missing out on.
We'll try to start setting things up right at the first of the week.
Do, uh, you said you wanted to bring something up. We hadn't really planned on it, but...
Oh, I just wanted to, I didn't hear from Kerry about the amphitheater and where we're at with the process of that, if there is an update.
There is no update on the amphitheater. Staff have been too busy just trying to get.
And then the other one was the Cedar Grove Cemetery. Has the consultant been down there to evaluate the tombstones and to make a recommendation?
To start repairing them?
Yes.
Um, we ended up working with the questers on that. I, Kerry may be able to answer it. I don't know if they've already started doing repairs or not.
They have not. Um, they got employees and they're, they're, they're going to work with the, the, the.
Breville.
Um, the E S N R, you know, as far as working for their employees.
Are we going, do we have funds for that?
We have, we have allocated some funds for that.
Great.
We'll just go around the horn real quick. If anybody has anything on the pro.
Foster, on the, the preliminary agenda, you know, that was started, there were a couple of items. One MSD, the other strategic plan. Can you elaborate on what the proposed discussion was on both of those?
So on the MSD, really wanted to have the city attorney here with us with that. That's one reason why we didn't have that on today. Strategic plan, that could literally be a standalone meeting as well. So we'd like to schedule additional time to talk about those things. Cause just, just on the strategic plan alone, you know, the goal of the strategic plan is to, to look over the next three to five years on where we want to go. And we need to have that because this board, you've got three more years, this month, three more years in your term. And so we want to see where we are, where we want to be, what goals and objectives we want to accomplish. Because if you look on the website, under administration, I think underneath the governing board, there are goals and objectives, I believe it was twenty eighteen, Brenda, that are still, still up, up there. So we need to talk about goals and objectives that this board would like to accomplish. And one of the things that we did today was show you some of the projects and things that, that are going to be coming up. And not only will they not be completed this year, but it's gonna take multiple years to do that. And I'm sure each of you have some goals that you would like to accomplish during this term. So we're gonna have to look at everything. Now, Parks and Recreation, Police, Fire, Public Utilities, four departments, they have a strategic plan. Some of those plan, I think Utilities, they, they're, they're, I think their plan was done in twenty seventeen, so it's, it's time for an upgrade on that. Overall, the city does not have one. Development Services, they've got a land use plan that helps guide the development of the, of the city with planning and zoning over the next ten years. But in terms of a department-wide strategic, they don't have that. So we're gonna really have to look at overall what, what the city would like to do. And that's gonna take some considerable con, conversation, some input from you on how you would like to proceed with that. So that's why we didn't really tackle that today, but we do need to. And with MSD, that's gonna be a lot of moving parts. I think it'd be more beneficial for the city attorney to be here because he can definitely provide some, it's more of a historical aspect of that, on how that is, how that has evolved over time. And then we'll get direction from the board on how, how you would like to move forward with the MSD.
Well, it just, it kind of confirms my, my earlier recommendation that the board needs to be meeting more often to address a, a number of these issues. Again, I, I appreciate, you know, the comments made by board, board members of not wanting to have monthly meetings, but we, we've got issues that, that have yet to be discussed, that need to be discussed in detail. So it's gonna take time. So we need to set some meetings up to address those issues. That's good.
Do you asking me for a motion to adjourn?
Willie said that, too. If you have anything that you wanted to say before we did that.
No, sir.
All right.
Well, Master.
Not a thing. Alderman Best?
Yeah.
Alderman Hicks?
I, I agree with Alderman Pro. I mean, we didn't talk about ETJ or ethics training either. So what I was really gonna ask was, when's our next work session? But, you know, we decide that another day. But there are a lot of things we need to discuss, not just newbies.
And Alderman Brenton, that was another, we, we definitely want to do the, the training. I think that the direction we got on that training was that we reported to do it together with the city attorney here who could provide additional insight. We weren't able to do that today. But I, I think the goal would be for us to do that in January. That, that's what I would really like to, to do. That's what staff would like to do. And we can definitely work on the, the proposed schedule on that and come back to the board at next week's meeting and see what, what you would prefer to do.
So is that all you have? So we've got one meeting in December, and I understand the holidays are coming up. If the board would like to have a meeting sometime in December, another work session, whatever you want, retreat, whatever you want to call it, then the clerk could send out a little doodle poll like she does and let's find out a date that works for everyone. And we can have a second meeting in December if that's what the board would like and do the ethics training in January.
Are you agree?
So this, I know there's three.
We have a retreat coming up, correct?
Well, we typically do that in February.
February, that's great. So...
There might need to be some things discussed before then, before we do the retreat, so.
I'm not interested in waiting.
So, so have we pinpointed, what is the major issues or concerns or projects that the other board members feel that they need to be updated on? Is, is...
How about if we do this, I'll just make a recommendation. Every board member, send the manager a list of topics that you would like to discuss. I think we kind of did it with this, but obviously timeframe didn't allow everything to be discussed. Send a list of everything you got on your heart and your mind, and then let's figure out what kind of timeframe. And to be honest with you, this could have been a full-day meeting. Could have started this morning and had it run all day and done some more items. But let's get our list together. Bobby wants the amphitheater.
That's not on my list.
That's on mine. And we'll send that to the city manager, and then the clerk can send out a doodle poll for the month of December. And I can go ahead and tell you, you can skip the week of the fifth and start with the week of the twelfth for me, first week itself.
And, and just so you know, we, we do have on the list, ethics training, strategic plan, MSD, and ETJ. Those are four things we definitely have on the list.
Four items.
Four items, four items for a, for a future work session to discuss.
Okay. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Stand by.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or adjourned?